All right, I'm gonna call this public hearing on ordinance 2012-14, extension of discontinued nonconforming uses. I guess we call this to order, it's just a public hearing. Anybody who wants to address the council, you can come up and step to the podium. You can also address things during the council meeting if you like, but this meeting is specifically set aside for the purpose of doing this. And I see we have pictures going up now, so maybe... Well, let's see, Phyllis, are these your pictures? You wanna start, since we got pictures?
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Reed. I live at 101 Fairwood Lane. And as you all know, my property borders the back of this property that we're discussing. When I first met Mr. Melka, he told me himself that he buys and sells houses, and he sells the contents of them, and that he has a cleaning business for commercial properties, that he's a landscaper, he's installed pools, he has a construction company. He stated that he intended to operate a sign business, as well as several other businesses out of the property. I suggest to you that Mr. Melka is doing just that. In March of 2001, Mr. Melka formed the business Gold Crown Advanced Services, LLC. The purposes listed on the Articles of Incorporation listed a wide array of businesses, including construction, sign business, design glass and mirror, sales and purchases, and remodeling, all at the location of 1010 South Main Street. In March of 2012, Mr. Melka applied to the town for the exception to operate a family sign business. While only listing a sign business, the scope of intended use, according to the charter, was obviously much broader than a family sign business. Conveniently, the business was dissolved in January 22 of 2013, after almost two years of existence, and also after forming a new business, Royal Signs and Services, LLC, which was formed on December 3, 2012. The new charter lists the address of 1010 South Main Street, Mount Airy, Maryland, as the address of the company with Mr. Melka's wife as resident agent. The purposes listed are sign business, construction, design, remodeling, cleaning, sales, and purchases. I encourage you to check out the website for Gold Crown Advanced Services. It is still an active website and has been doing business for quite some time. The site boasts the wide variety of professional services, including commercial signage, professional cleaning, contracting, and construction, all of which are much more than a family sign business. It appears that Mr. Melka has been unlawfully operating a business for the last two years at this location, and obviously, he plans to continue the same activities under the newly formed business entity. And I have brought for the council copies of the website, the charters, and all that, so you can see for yourself. Both Mr. Melka and his brother-in-law, Mr. Applegate, told me there would be no traffic in and out of the property, and that I would see only their personal trucks on the property. Neither Mr. Melka nor Mr. Applegate have been true to their word. For the past several months, I have documented the constant flow of vehicles in and out of the property, including evenings and weekends. A coded gate prevents anyone from entering the back of the property. Only those who enter a code are allowed access to the back buildings, where it appears business is being conducted. When Mr. Melka installed the fence between our properties, we had discussed and agreed upon the placement of the fence. I made it quite clear that I did not want my trees damaged. I came home one evening to find the entire backside cut from one of my trees. I reiterated that I wanted no further damage done to my trees. Yet I came home to the limbs being cut from the trees for the next two evenings. Excuses and apologies were given, but the limbs were cut and cannot be replaced. When I voiced my disapproval, Mr. Melka's response was angry, threatening, and very offensive. I am not the only one to which Mr. Melka has been disrespectful. He has been disrespectful to both the town and the local residents since he obtained the property. He was disrespectful to the town when he attempted the weekly yard sales, when he wrote "help" all over the building windows indicating that the town had wronged him. For months, we have all seen the endless supply of items for sale, which were displayed on Main Street. This is not only an eyesore, but a nuisance to the neighborhood and one that reduces the property value of our homes. I have observed materials being loaded and unloaded into buildings and trucks on many occasions. I've had to ask for trash piles to be removed and grass to be mowed. There was one particular evening when the exhaust fan ran with an offensive smell being expelled. I am concerned of the implications of those chemicals used in the sign-making process and the effects that they may have on our health and air quality in a residential neighborhood. As I watch cars go in and out of the property on a daily basis, I believe Mr. Melka is still challenging the town by conducting business that is clearly in violation of the town code. It is also an insult to law-abiding businesses in Mount Airy who have done the right thing. They have paid high dollar for commercial and industrial properties, and they operate within the town code. They lawfully comply with local, state, and federal regulations as required. This property is still zoned residential and is certainly not a construction yard. Construction vehicles should not be parked, stored, nor be operating in and out of the property. This is not a normal activity found in a residential neighborhood, and neighbors should not be forced to tolerate these activities. I brought along pictures of some of my experiences since Mr. Melka has purchased the property. Monica, if you would...
Sure, I'll just look through them.
These all have dates on the bottom. And this is what I view from my backyard.
Excuse me. Can you go back to Frank's for me, please? Okay. That's 24...
Christmas Eve.
...of last year. Okay, thank you. If you all remember that building for me, please, because I'm gonna talk about that building. Thanks.
Can you go back one? What is that?
It's like a sweeper.
What is that blue thing?
A little blue thing.
It's got a big brush in front of it.
Yeah.
I think that's the last one, Phyllis.
I believe that's the last one. At this point, my trust in Mr. Melka and Mr. Applegate is very low. Both have made promises hoping that I would sign their petition. Since I declined, they now see me as uncooperative. I've spent many sleepless nights worrying about the safety of myself and my property, but I'm more afraid to think what might happen to my property if I do not speak up. This property is already more intrusive than when Dennis Kitchen &amp; Bath owned it. The existing problem with stormwater drainage has never been corrected. The possible soil contamination is a long example of the collateral damage that exists from a commercial business and one that needs to be addressed. This decision will set precedent for future businesses in Mount Airy. If this is the type of conduct that has been allowed to go on without having permission, what can we expect if Mr. Melka and Mr. Applegate are permitted an opportunity to run a sign business? I believe they have clearly been running a multitude of businesses unlawfully from this property for the past several months. According to their charter, they intend to run more than a sign business if given the opportunity. I see no value to the town or its residents by amending this exception. The photos I shared with you are an example of what many citizens could expect in their backyard if the amendment is passed. There is nothing compatible about this business with the existing neighborhood. The town has spent many hours and a considerable amount of money on this problem. I ask that you deny this amendment and let our neighborhood go back to the peaceful, quiet residential neighborhood it once was. Thank you.
Okay, we got... Somebody, come on up. Anybody else who wants to get up? You might wanna... I don't know how many people plan to talk on this, but you might wanna line up on the wall. You know the drill.
Could we go back to that picture that is New Year's Eve of 2012? I'm Claire Morton. I live at 1102 South Main Street, and I'm right next door to this. And believe me, it's so sad that all she shows are the... are sad... I'm so nervous. This is just one person's perspective. My perspective is Frank gave us the key, the number, so my grandchildren, who are 11 and 10, can ride their bikes back here because we live on that busy South Main Street. Look at the fence he put up. Do you see all the cats he put on the top? And he put that all the way around. Oh, just to tell you, I've lived in my house for 38 years. Now, you see this building here? When I chaired Festival on the Ridge... I'm not quite too sure it was 1998, 1999? There was a print shop here, Dennis Kitchen &amp; Bath, that made countertops. That's illegal, and it went on for years, surprise, surprise. And the town council just approved of a flooring shop going into where the warehouse is. That's three businesses in one place. 38 years I've lived there, let me tell you. Jim, my husband, found a couple. I won't show you where or who they are, but they were in a car in the middle of the day. You know what they were doing, in the backseat of the car. He's got the fence up, he's got the gates up. Yes, there are some cars that go in there, but believe me, it is nothing like Dennis' client store. They were horrible. You talk about horrible, horrible neighbors. If I would've known, I would've had a slideshow that just showed all the trash and stuff, most of the trash. If you saw it on that back, I don't know what you call it, that hall thing? It was all binded up with rope, with rope. It was up in rope. Yes, I do have some trucks in there. Yes, it was. Can you please go back? There is one there, it was a big thing with...
That's Alan?
I don't lie. Keep going. Keep on. I'll tell you what. It's all tied up with ropes. He's fixing the place up. The front is amazing. Did you see? Well, of course, you didn't see any of the good stuff. This is sad. Had I known, I would've taken pictures, too. And he was plowing all this with that bobcat that he had. He was taking off all the snow that was over there. So, yeah, do they make noise? Yeah. Oh, I think it's back. No, not that one.
Yeah, there was one with like a pyramid of like beat-up old boxes, but...
But they're all done. It's not all over.
They were dumped, they blew over my backyard.
No, it's tied down.
Was that it?
No, keep going.
It's not tied.
No, that's not tied, duh. There it is, tied, tied. So Frank, now I have to tie everything. But let me tell you, difference of night and day, night and day, with him being a neighbor. And I don't know about her drainage problem, but when Nina Dinison owned that place, she told us that she asked her, and they wouldn't even allow the dump truck to come and put the rocks, gravel, in her thing. That's how nasty they were. And another thing is Frank... Phyllis called our house and asked if Jim and I had smelled that horrible smell. And I was talking with other people, and it was around the town. I can honestly say I walked out into my backyard because I knew it was trouble, and it wasn't just coming from that building. It was a whole... I don't know what day it is.
Was this the smell that was like about six months ago?
Yes.
Okay. It was all over town.
It was all over town. That's what she's talking about, about the fumes. And there was a print shop in that building. You allowed it. Do you know why I know? Because when I chaired Festival on the Ridge, he made the signs for us. They were these white signs, and it said where the scarecrow making was, where the face painting was, and all that stuff. Like I said, 1998, 1999. That was approved to go in that building, plus Dennison's client store. And the council, I don't know who the mayor was at that time, approved a flooring shop that's in the warehouse. I don't know. If you have the building here, and believe me, my driveway is right... The driveways, we have parallel driveways, and he's got that fence, and yeah. I was gonna complain about the squeak, but I noticed that he W.D. 40. Because every time somebody came in, you could hear the squeak, but you tell the man, "He fixes it." I don't know what more to say. Next time, I'll bring my own pictures.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Rick?
Oh, Jim, my husband would be here tonight, but his voice got out.
It's PLC. ...for 1308 Longbow Road. I think probably most of you know I don't have a dog in this fight. I live across town. I live on the other side of 27. So I really don't have a dog in this fight and don't have any personal interest in it. In thinking about what's been going on, I got to thinking this afternoon that most elected officials, when they take office, take an oath. They swear or affirm that they will uphold the laws of the town, county, whatever jurisdiction to which they're elected. Tonight, we're gonna be discussing a change to existing code. Some, it seems, would rather than uphold the laws in effect when they were elected, want to change them. And I wonder if those people, if they ran, when they ran for office, did they make this apparent, that they were going to look at ways to change the existing code? For whatever effect, even if they thought it was a benefit. It's been said by myself, in addition to others, that this change will benefit only one business. And that statement, if you will, has been challenged, in saying, "No, it can affect any other number of businesses." And I asked at the time, "What other businesses?" And I got no answer. It came to my attention later, after the question was asked, that somebody approached town staff and asked the staff to research, to see if there were any other businesses that it might impact. Apparently, it wasn't known, but they thought they better check it out. It's my understanding that approximately six other businesses might be affected. But to my knowledge, not one of them has asked for a change in the code. It might affect somebody, maybe someday. This change has been put in effect, I still contend, for one business. And I don't think that's right. As I previously commented, this property was purchased, apparently without the proper, what I would call, due diligence. Homework wasn't done. Was an attorney involved? Was a title search involved? Why didn't they know that this property had been reverted to residential zoning? It's not the town's fault, and I do not believe it's the town's job to correct errors made by someone who didn't apply due diligence. And I don't think the town bears that responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tom, you up next?
Yeah. My name is Tom Neff, 1110 South Main Street, four houses down. Phyllis, I'm sorry, you have to look at this. What I look at every day is a building that looks like it did when I was this young and with another member that used to live in Mount Airy. We used to go back and sit on the farm all tractors. Probably wouldn't... Anyway, enough on that. But I'd look at a building that was the way it was. There's not... I think one time, we talked about... We talked about putting fine arts there. We didn't want that, too, because there's too much traffic on South Main Street. There's really too much traffic on South Main Street. But there weren't any pictures, and you can see them when you drive down there. I look at the front of the building, that's the way it used to be. Everything, the bushes are trimmed, the gate's up. There's some wheels, I don't know where you got those. But on the fence, and I like what I see. I don't see what Phyllis sees. I saw the fence go up, and I thought, "Well, hopefully, that would keep some of the view, you know, if it was bad back there." And I don't look down there. Well, when I look down there, I see the fence. But I like what I see. I like the way it is. I don't drive back around the property, but I've been looking that. I've lived here since '74 in my house. Great-grandfather built it. I've lived there off and on all my life. I've seen... Pete and I have seen steam engines in Mount Airy. I don't know how many other people, so we've seen a lot.
Eight.
I know. Anyway, I'm for what's going on now. I hope this can be rectified to everybody's need, you know? If we hit a business because they made one little mistake and they should've shown due diligence, I don't think we'd have many businesses around because everybody will make one little mistake. It might not be a huge one, or... Everybody's gonna make a mistake. Let the guys do their thing.
What up?
My name is Franko Melka. I'm the owner of 1010 South Main Street. I just wanna say something what Ms. Phyllis say about the property. Steve Applegate is no longer with my company. I think all knows what happened. I changed the name of the company because I don't wanna be part anymore of the Gold Crown because there was a lot of mistake with Steve. And also, the website is not anymore my website, it's his website. It's with his name. You know, I'm not on this website. Doesn't mean whatever is on the website, Gold Crown Signs or Gold Crown Advanced Services is not mine. I closed it this year because we have problem, family problem, with the money. What else? The traffic, what you say. If you see those pictures, that's all my trucks. The white truck is mine, the gray truck is mine, the red one is also mine. The Mustang is my son, the green dark is my wife. That's me. There is maybe who's come there is Roger Rich. You know, he helping me with my stuff. You know, he's also from Mount Airy. You know, that's what you see, his truck there. And yes, I do storage in there some stuff for my company. Everybody know this. Also, the inspector from Frederick came to my property. I show him each of the room, each office, each corner of my building. And he told me he didn't... Also, inspector from town was there. And each of the inspector tell me there is nothing illegal in this building because I own this building. I know it's not commercial, like you say. And I storage in there my stuff. I'm not storage in there, I don't know, whatever. And if my truck staying on 1010 South Main Street or is staying on Damascus 9608, that's my house. I don't see a difference because my house is also residential, you know?
What's your house?
Excuse me? Why? My house, my house, I don't have this big yard. And I can put this truck behind this big property, you know, where it's like two acres parking space, you know? And I don't know why... You know, there is other people, they have problem with the business. I understand, you know? But I don't... I understand why there's only one person like you who has problem with parking my truck in the back. What is...
Mr. Melka, if you could just address us. Thanks.
That's what I say. Those truck, there was like one truck of the Rich, Roger, the rest of it is like my trucks. Yes, I come in there almost every day, in and out. Also, there was some cancers inside. I show them also what is there. And nobody, like two inspector, one from Frederick Town, one from, I think, Mount Airy Town, nobody saw anything illegal. Only what is there illegal? I don't know if it's illegal or not because I storage in there my stuff for my company. I don't have any more cleaning company. I closed it because it was like my wife... I don't wanna show my body, but my seven... 85% of my body, I have eczema because of the stress. That's why we closed the... That's why we closed the cleaning company and also the construction company. That's me. I'm not doing any more cleaning and construction company. I just do the sign company. And my new website's gonna come in up in about two, three weeks. It's gonna be royalsignsandservicesllc.com. You can look at it if you wanted. There is nothing with the construction, nothing with the cleaning. And you can look under my name. I don't know how you do all this. You are really good, you know? You know, you can look under my name and my wife's name. There is nothing really else than Royal Signs. Everything else was closed up. And about the... About some stuff from last year, the trailer with the boxes, you know, with the straps. Yes, that was stuff. That was bedroom. That was stuff for kitchen and for house. Yeah, that was my... I don't think so that's disturb anybody else, only Mrs....
I was just wondering if he didn't... If he could have a dumpster in the back that fences around like Blossom and Basket Boutique and all the town people that have the...
Those are commercial zones, not residential zones.
Oh, okay.
You would not be able to have a dumpster permanently in a residential zone? I don't think.
Okay. I could take up some of the...
I'm pretty sure that we wouldn't allow a dumpster permanently in a residential zone.
That was not like a...
Can I ask a question to Mr. Melka?
Yes.
Mr. Melka, if you say that you're not gonna do anything but a sign business, why did you apply for a new business charter that states cleaning, construction?
No, I don't have any cleaning.
Absolutely.
Although I think we're getting a little bit...
Yeah, I think we're getting off the topic.
I'm sorry, topic.
I don't have any more cleaning.
Because this is actually not an ordinance to approve anything that he does here. This is a general ordinance to determine if we're going to expand a time limit on something.
I just wanna explain what it all was.
Right.
What you saw on the trailer, that was the stuff would I move to my warehouse. I know it's not commercial. I know it's a residential zone, but it's still my warehouse, you know? And if you have... You have your garage. All the other people have their garage. And if you put there... If you have a construction company, okay, and you have a bobcat, and you're gonna park the bobcat in your residential garage.
We would not allow that. Well, in the garage, yes. We would allow it in the garage, we would not allow it outside.
I don't wanna be bad neighbors, okay? Because I love to be really nice to any other people. I don't know why Mrs. Phyllis say I was...
It's off-topic.
Disrespectful. I never been this way to you, never.
Guys, we need to wrap it up because we have another meeting to start.
I just wanna say all what you see. That was my stuff from my construction, what I had. I don't have it anymore. And I just put it into my building, you know? What was on the ground next to the building, that was like two days, you know? Then inspector or somebody came to my property. I clean up in like one hour, everything was gone. Anything... Anything, and anybody doesn't like it about this property, one of my neighbor across the street or left side, there is nothing really too much. But I say, if somebody ask me anything, I do it right away. There is nothing like, I have a lot of pictures I didn't bring here, from nineteen-seventy-something, from nineteen-eighty, the people from Frederick helped me from tax assessment, and I show how the property look. There was like four, five, six foot of the weeds and garbage everywhere, when the, I have nothing like this, this. There was two truck, what Mrs. Phyllis show, and for plywood, what I clean up next day, I don't see any big deal of it. And, and I always try to work with anybody, also with the town. I know people's not, some people doesn't like it, but I don't think so ever gonna be like Dennis Kitchen. There is no, there is no way, because there was like many, many trucks, what I have on the pictures, and I, I have like two, three trucks maximum, you know, that's, that's what I was saying. I don't, if somebody wanna ask me something, I can answer anything, what, what you guys want.
Yeah, this is not about the site plan at this time, so.
Yeah.
Wouldn't have any question.
No, I just wanna explain what it was, you know.
But it's nothing to do with your site plan. This is an ordinance to extend a non-conforming?
Yeah, this really has nothing to do with, yeah.
This is an ordinance to extend a non-conforming use. It could hit upon you at some time, and then there's gonna be some serious discussion, I'm sure.
I do have a question. I was told that if, if he can't have his sign job in his cells, that there's actually doctors could go in there, is that true?
I believe that is, I believe it is.
Professional? So professional could go in there, and I could have forty cars going?
More than forty cars.
Professional office, we'd only allow like a doctor to live there, correct?
I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, we have, that's, that would be, that would be a whole, they would have to go back and research what would be allowed.
The short answer is, yes, there is.
If you say the professional offices, you're gonna have, you're gonna have minimum, minimum forty cars a day. Minimum forty cars a day.
The question, your question is?
But that's not, guys, it's not what we're dealing with here tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's not what's on the agenda.
I just wanna say whatever you saw.
What you wanna do there is not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is a general ordinance for extending permitting for non-conforming uses. If you were to approve this, you would still have to come in and get a whole lot of permits.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanna explain what was on the picture, and I just wanna say one last thing. Whenever the town allowed or not to allow, there is always like, my mayor say, like, two months, three months ago, you always can say, you allowed me this, 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 this. And if I do something different, you can stop, you know, and that's true. You know, that, that's in your power, you know, and I think if I gonna do something?
But the mayor has not had any conversation with you?
No, no, that was, that was he, like, not with me. I never talk to you like personally. I just say what I hear, it was like two, three months ago.
Things gotta interpret it.
No.
We, we gotta, we gotta move on.
Okay, that's it.
I see, you wanna, you wanna discuss this topic?
I wanna discuss exactly what's in?
Okay, is there anybody else here who wants to discuss this topic? Because we need to get a handle on time. Okay, you're gonna be the last person.
Okay.
Thanks.
Roxanne Hemphill, I live at six oh five Park Avenue. I'm also the chairperson of the Board of Appeals for the town of Mount Airy. This property does have a long history of, or properties that, commercial properties, let's say, that have gone into foreclosure. Obviously, they have a long history of being commercial. And they get stuck in a problem because if they could have sold the property and done a like exchange or substituted, that property, that approval would have continued. Unfortunately, because of the process, the foreclosure process, no one's gonna look into that or do any due diligence, so then it is up to the responsibility of the new person coming in to do the due diligence at that time. When this property went up for auction, I did call the auction company, and they were explaining that this was a non-conforming use, and that it would go back, revert back to its original zone. So there was definite disclosure given to anyone who called about the property being auctioned. That being said, I understand the five year, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the five years, honestly, I really am. And I don't know, I don't know how many years it should be, because I know the foreclosure process, I do residential real estate, so I know that the foreclosure process is a long process. They're trying to, to trim it down. They want to put properties on the market, but, you know, I have people that have been in their houses for four years. So I'm just very uncomfortable with the five years. I understand the precedent with the, with the businesses. I understand that there's a lot of things that need to happen, and we won't talk about ten-ten, but just in the prop, the process of the commercial properties that have this problem, I, I'm just really uncomfortable with the five years. That's all I have to say. And I think it, you know, would behoove the, maybe to change it to two years, I don't know. I'm just uncomfortable with five years.
Thanks, Roxanne. We appreciate your work on Board of Appeals. So that ends discussion on this topic. Do we wanna take maybe a five-minute recess, and then start, or jump right into the meeting?
I'm good, we could just jump right?
All right. All right, I will, I will adjourn the public hearing, and we will now go into the February fourth, Mount Airy Town Council meeting. I'll start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up on the agenda, I believe the mayor has a proclamation.
We get the lights back on, too?
And I see all the guys from the VFW here. Did we all sign that?
Yeah, I think so.
Gentlemen, if you could please join me up front?
Bunch more out?
Welcome, Tom.
Good to see you.
I saw you were here.
Thank you, I'm gonna get you that information.
You were here before we started.
Whoever would like to join me at the podium, I'd be honored to stand next to you. I was gonna call for you if I didn't see you jump up. I can think of no greater honor than to give a presentation, a proclamation, to the veterans of foreign wars. Everybody's lined up. Mr. Murphy, I did receive your package, thank you. Got more coming in?
More coming in.
They're bringing up the rear flank.
Thank you, gentlemen. Tonight, it is my honor to present this proclamation to the Counties for VFW Post 10076, forty-fifth anniversary. Whereas, on May twenty-eighth, nineteen thirty-six, by an act of the United States Congress, the Veterans of Foreign Wars became a government-chartered nonprofit organization. As such, it receives no funding from the United States tax receipts, and is supported by charitable donations. And whereas, on November sixth, nineteen sixty-seven, the Counties for VFW Post 10076, Mount Airy, Maryland, was formed and chartered. Since then, Post 10076, along with the Ladies Auxiliary, chartered September eighth, nineteen seventy, and the Men's Auxiliary, chartered April first, two thousand and three, have, in addition to veterans helping federal, fellow veterans, been directly involved in supporting the Mount Airy community and civic organizations. And whereas, a great part of their time, effort, and revenue is directed toward instilling pride and patriotism in the community, with special emphasis toward our youth, tomorrow's leaders, and our great community and nation. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the town of Mount Airy hereby congratulate and applaud Counties for VFW Post 10076 on forty-five years of helping our veterans and donating their valuable time to build an even better Mount Airy community. Sir, it's my honor.
Oh, thank you very much.
All right, I'd like to thank the mayor again, and maybe I'll just have all our members say what war they served in. I served in Vietnam War. Go ahead, who's your good answer?
Vietnam.
Korea.
Vietnam.
Vietnam.
Korea.
Okay, I think that's about everybody, thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, yes, yes. We're a great nation because of you.
Next month, we have our board ceremony for student essays. It's seven o'clock.
Absolutely.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump out of order here just for a second to get the police and the fire company out, so let's have our police report. I see Corporal Wiedniewski up there, and then we'll, and then we'll go to the minutes of the meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll have two months of police report. Tried to consolidate it here in an effort to save time. So in December of two thousand and twelve, since we didn't have a January meeting, I'll run the numbers for eleven traffic accidents investigated, and seven of those were charged on citations. In December, we had a hundred and thirty-six traffic citations issued, two hundred and one traffic warnings, and thirty-nine safety equipment repair orders. In December, we had thirteen criminal arrests, four of those drug arrests, one of juvenile arrests, six incident reports were taken, two town citations were issued, and there was five DUI arrests made, for a total of two hundred and seventy-one calls for service. And a couple of notables for December, specifically the thirteenth, Trooper Bowen conducted a traffic stop, and due to his training and knowledge, he seized a large quantity of heroin off the suspect, and the suspect was placed under arrest and charged with a felony. I'll move to January. We had eleven traffic accidents with eight people charged, a hundred and six traffic citations issued, a hundred and sixty-six warnings, fifty-one safety equipment repair orders. In the month of January, eleven criminal adult arrests were made, four of those were drug arrests, two juvenile arrests, two incident reports, a town citation issued, and five DUI arrests. In the month of January, we had three hundred and sixty-one calls for service. A notable in January, which is the second, at four o'clock in the morning, two troopers from Westminster responded to the Bank of America in Mount Airy for an alarm, and the investigation revealed that suspects used a stolen bulldozer in a failed attempt to steal the ATM machine from Bank of America. Troopers from the criminal investigation responded, and they are taking over the investigation. They do have leads, apparently these suspects are doing this all over the area, Howard County, Anne Arundel County, Prince George's County. We do have suspects at this time. A, on the fourth of January, Trooper Bowen responded to the seven-hundred block of Horpil Drive for a burglary, and that suspect forced, forced entry into the victim's basement, nobody was home. Several items were stolen from the victim, including a camera, flat-screen television. We had our crime lab respond to process the scene, and we did develop a suspect and did return the property to the victim. That suspect will be charged with a felony. And the last thing, we have five troopers down here, including myself. One of those troopers, his name is Roger Schwab, he was, he was, received the award for Trooper of the Year for the entire Westminster Barrack, which is comprised of seventy troopers. So not just Mount Airy, the entire barrack. It's a, it's a great honor, especially with the competition at the barrack, to receive that award. I'm gonna provide you details of the ceremony for that award as far as the presentation is concerned, and that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corporal.
I just have one quick question. I live on Park Avenue in downtown Sway, I was up at three a.m. one morning, and there were three kids walking out from very, you know, down to, you know, on Park Avenue, but I know we have a curfew, but they were not, they were young adults, they weren't adults on Saturday.
So when you see that, please call us, because there's a trooper right at the office sometimes, if not, they're usually in close proximity.
At that time or not?
Well, yeah, just, you know the Westminster Barrack's phone number? Yeah, give us a call if you see that, we'll call you, we'll, we'll?
And actually, your number will ring to the Westminster Barrack, if they're not there.
Right. The office number will ring correct five times, and then it's forwarded to the Westminster Barrack. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporal.
Thanks.
Fire Company.
Well, we got two.
For the month of January, there was a total of a hundred and seventy-five calls, eighty-nine in Carroll, seventy-six in Frederick, six in Howard, and four Montgomery. Just a side note, we just completed the installation of our new generator at the firehouse. It's now capable of servicing the entire station for approximately three or four days. That was a big undertaking that we took on, and it is now complete now. And Vice President Wallace has a?
Thanks, Jeff.
Good evening. I have a statement that I am going to read on behalf of the Mount Airy Fire Company, and for the media, I do have copies. I would like to comment on behalf of the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company, on the letter to the editor that appeared in the Carroll County Times on December twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, alleging secret meetings about the Harrison-Ligier property. Let me state for the record, and I ask the council members to confirm, that the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company has not engaged in any secret meetings about the Harrison-Ligier property or a land swap. The fire company was contacted some year, some time ago, approximately two years ago, by Larry Twill from Carroll County Economic Development, and presented with the preliminary idea of a land swap for the carnival grounds. It is the position of the fire company, that we were not then, nor are we now, interested in any such land swap. This position is supported by the fact that we recently sought a building permit for a new carnival building, and we are currently soliciting bids for a new roof for the activities building. A major upgrade to the electrical service for the carnival grounds was completed in two thousand and twelve. As to our request for rezoning of the carnival grounds, this has been an ongoing goal of the fire company. It is the position of the fire company that the use of surrounding properties has changed over the years, and basic principles of planning support rezoning to reflect such changes. As to the existence of community ballfields on the property, we wish to make it perfectly clear that the fire company, in support of our local community, provides these fields at minimum cost to the community. However, if it ever becomes necessary for the fire company to sell the carnival grounds, the existence of these fields will not be a determining factor in any such decision. The use of these fields can be terminated at any time by the Mount Airy Volunteer Fire Company with proper notice, as outlined in our land use agreement with MEA. Furthermore, we do not feel that the existence of these fields should in any way influence proceedings related to our request for rezoning, which should be based solely on sound planning principles and legal requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. All right, let's jump back to the minutes. We have the February third minutes, I'm sorry, the December third minutes.
Thank you.
And the January twenty-second minutes. Unless somebody had some changes, I know they came around and we were told to pass changes back, unless somebody had some changes, I will move, we accept both as drafted. So I have a second, I have a second from Scott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. All right, moving down the agenda. Community concerns, citizen comments. This is a fifteen-minute window we've set aside for anybody who wants to address the council on some issue. I would say probably some issue other than the one that you already addressed us on previously, but, you know, we've got a little time. Pete?
Thank you, sir. Mayor, councilman? I'm here tonight on behalf of the Mount Airy Historical Society to announce the honorees for the two thousand and thirteen Hall of Fame.
Ah, it's not gonna be a secret anymore, I don't have to keep it secret.
It's not gonna be a secret. It's not gonna be a secret. The inductees this year are John W. Jack DeValt, Beverly G. Green, Ray A. Grimes, Angela B. Moore, and Dr. Lyndon Myers. Class of two thousand and thirteen will be officially inducted at the Mount Airy Historical Society's annual Hall of Fame induction ceremony and dinner on the nineteenth of March at the Gold Star Post American Legion, one oh, eight oh one Prospect Road in Mount Airy. Tickets are on sale today, started today. Tickets are available right here at Town Hall from Kathy and Mary. Thanks, Mayor, for allowing us to do that, we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
They're also available at the New Windsor State Bank from Mr. Denny A. Hall. The price of the tickets are twenty-two... of the tickets are $22. The social hour begins at 5:30, followed by a buffet dinner at 6:30, and the induction ceremony. And this marks the 14th anniversary of the Mount Airy Hall of Fame. 14 times we've done this. And I wanted to share that with everybody. I look forward to a full capacity. We usually have about 200 seats. I understand tickets were brisk today, so hope to see you, hope to, hope that you get a ticket. Also, I'd like to thank all the people who wrote a nomination form. There are many, many, many people in our town who deserve to be considered. And we do hold on to those nomination forms and review them for five continuous years. So if there was someone that you said, you know how, that person should really be in the Hall of Fame, you got a whole year out there, citizens, a whole year, to write those folks up, send it in next year. Because we're going to do this again next year. Thank you very much.
Pete, that was March?
19th.
19th?
It's the March and the 19th, 5:30 to 6:00.
That's Tuesday, all right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizen comments or concerns? Come on up.
Urban Martin. I live at 703 North Warfield Drive. My comments are not concerning the town, but an access to the town. Watersville Road. Watersville Road, back in the early 1980s, when there was original subdivision request for that area, which is now Nottingham Village, we were told at the meetings that we couldn't have that subdivision because of not proper road. Watersville Road wasn't big enough to handle the subdivision. Today, it is handling the subdivision. The, the grass along the road is not mowed very often in the summer, and lots of times, joggers have to jump off the road into knee-high grass when they're jogging along the road. There is no bike lanes. There is no place for the people to jog. It's barely, barely wide enough for two big trucks to pass. And if Mount Airy has a development at Nottingham Village, which I'm on the edge of, I think that Mount Airy has some responsibilities. Thank you.
Thanks. Although, it's not our property. It's not actually even, it's not even in our town. Yeah.
But you put the development there.
Right, but the development is, is in town, but the road's not even.
Yeah, you actually, this is a very good point. Nottingham sits almost out.
I've ridden my bike down that road. I know what you're talking about.
You all sit out in, almost like an island. I know there's some planning to pull you around back towards the Y's Shopping Plaza, Twin Art Shopping Plaza, but that's a very good point. Thanks for bringing that to our attention.
I've ridden my bike down the road. It is a bad road.
Yeah, we ought to explore to see if there's anything we can do in future.
Yeah, I was going to suggest Peters or something that.
County can maybe.
Well, something the streets and roads can take to the county.
Um, yeah, it's not, I mean, it's not.
We just ought to explore options, and, you know, sometimes it's a call to the Department of Transportation and making them aware of it first, and then seeing what we can do. We won't get anything done if we don't reach out and try.
Well, a number of years ago, I did bring this situation up, and we did get guardrails.
See? And you asked and you received. I think we ought to look into.
I don't know what's going to happen, I mean, what you can do now. Because I don't see how the road can even be widened.
We'll find out what we can and can't, but we don't know until we try. So thanks for bringing it up.
Anyone else? All right, let's move on with the agenda. Ordinance resolutions. First off, we have an update on the Ethics Ordinance 2011-7. Reed's update here. I see Dick in the back. You want to say something to us, or you just want me to say that we've come up with another draft and passed it on to the state?
I'm Dick Swanson, Chair of the Ethics Commission. I do have one point relative to this, and that is that we have a draft ready to go to the State Ethics Commission for their review. There was an issue about whether we should amend what the state was suggesting in terms of exemptions for, by adding elected official to the authority for the Ethics Commission to issue exemptions. And I sent out an email and asked for your input, and I haven't heard anything. So that has not gone yet. And what we do need to do in conjunction with this is to determine whether that revised verbiage for the exemption section will stay as it is or revert back to the way the state suggests.
I would, my suggestion, like everyone else, would be send what you've got now, and when that particular section comes back, we can, I mean, obviously, they're going to change things when it comes back to us. So it's going to go through another process, and maybe when we, when we sit down and get to meet through another process, we can thoroughly go through that section again, and maybe we'll want to fight it, maybe we won't. But for now, I'd say go forward with what you.
My only concern with that is that at the workshop, it was requested that we send a question to the state as to.
Right, and we did.
And, and they unequivocally rejected our suggestion. So we know what the result's going to be for changing that section, and the question is, do we still want to go forward in light of the fact that the state has already told us they will not approve it?
The problem we have is we don't know what's going to come out of Annap, I mean, we're all hoping, and I know you've drafted a letter, hoping Annapolis is going to change the whole thing. So that's why I would say go forth with what we have. Chris?
I, I, I think, Dick, we're kind of talking back and forth between the council and ethics and leaving the public out of the dialogue, and there's no reference to it. And, I mean, just briefly for the public's consumption, long story short is this, and I'll paraphrase from my own opinion. The state is mandating that the town changes ethics law, ethics law. One of the things the council, or the majority of the council seems to want to do is change some of the state's regulations or some of the things the state's trying to push down on us. For example, one of the things the state's trying to do is have all elected officials report basically all of your holdings, your brother's holdings, your sister's holdings, your mother, your father. And, and we think that's unreasonable. We think it's unreasonable because for a town this size, we don't believe elected officials should have to disclose that amount of financial information. The second point is, and this is a real concern of mine, is that it's going to really put a damper on having people run for office. If you've got to fill out a disclosure form that lists everything that you own, all your properties, whether or not they have anything to do with the town, we think it'll be a real, a real downer to people trying to run for office. So at a very high level, that's what we're bannering back.
And I'd just add one more point to that. The Ethics Commission, the town of Mount Airy is working with several other municipalities throughout the state, and there are representatives going to the state and have drafted legislation to make changes to those disclosure requirements that Councilmember Everich is talking about. So the, the town is actively participating in changing what, across the board, throughout the state of Maryland, municipalities, counties, and school boards believe is a unfair and possible invasion of privacy in terms of the type of information the state is requiring elected officials to disclose.
Yeah, Chris, if I could, I mean, is it written mainly for professional politicians as opposed to small-town volunteers?
Yeah, Pat, I mean, at least, again, my, my, my opinion is that it's written right for large municipalities. And I also think, frankly, it's as a reaction to some of the shenanigans that have been going on in PG County. You've got, you know, people blushing checks down the toilet and things like that. So I think it's a knee-jerk reaction to that.
The cash in the bra is not going to show up in disclosure, David.
I, I was going to leave that one alone, but.
So that's, that's my comment. Your, your recommendation is to go ahead and send them what we have.
I would say send what you have, and then when it gets kicked back, we can, you know, we're obviously going to have to sit down and discuss it again, because they're going to make changes in whatever we send. They're not going to rubber stamp this.
They're, they're going to make recommendations back, but after the council approves, whatever form eventually gets approved for the ethics ordinance, the state, under the, my understanding of what they have said, will reject our ordinance, and then we're going to go back to square one. So you're absolutely right. The solution to this problem is legislative and to support the delegation that is down there trying to change the current law.
And it may be fixed legislatively by the time we go all the way through the cycle.
We hope it's done this session.
Yeah. So does everybody agree, have them send up what we, what we have finished, what we did?
I do.
I have one quick question. Dick, what does the state consider Mount Airy? Do they consider us a small municipality, medium municipality, large municipality? Because I know in some of our discussions, I, I thought that the spirit of what I got is that we're not considered a small municipality. We're actually one of the larger municipalities. Was I right? Or is my, is my thinking?
Well, leave my lay out for a second. There, there are two levels to municipalities. Those that are required to have an ethics commission with an ethics law, and those that are not. Those that are not are the very, very small municipalities, and we are not in that category. We are required under law to have an ethics commission and to have an ethics ordinance.
What, what's the, do, do you know what the threshold is?
I, it's, it's, it's a population threshold, and I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but I can tell you that the municipalities that are exempt are significantly smaller than Mount Airy.
Okay. So, so basically, and, and I understand what Councilman Everich is saying, but to sort of term ourselves as a small municipality, that's sort of stretching maybe a little?
The, the problem is that you have to send a request to the State Ethics Commission to be exempt as a small municipality under the law. The State Ethics Commission will not recognize us and therefore will not grant an exception. So we, we are going to live with for the future the state's ethics laws as they apply to municipalities.
Okay. Thank you.
Just as far as municipality sizes, just working with the Maryland municipality, you have municipalities that have 200 homes in them, such as Rosemont out in Frederick. And I think Dave Dunson in the front row is familiar with that. So there, there's much smaller municipalities.
Yes, there are.
I think, Peter, I think the, the consensus, at least from four, I don't know about Dave.
No, I'm, I, I, as I stated, I wasn't for changing. I mean, I, I went sort of along with what Tom's thought was, that I think what we're talking about is the changing of the and, the or, in the.
Right, right. And, and we didn't change it. And the question, and we're just saying, send it up unchanged, and we'll decide later if we want to fight about that.
But what, what we changed.
With them.
What we changed was, the, the section that I'm referring to provides that the Ethics Commission can grant exceptions for conflict of interest, and I believe the other one is financial disclosure, for non-elected officials. In other words, all commission members, that, that's all the employees. The change was that the, the council was recommending was adding an exemption for elected officials. If the state came back and said unequivocally, no, that section is not intended to allow for any exceptions from disclosure or conflict of interest requirements from elected officials. The way that it's being addressed in the legislature is to change significantly the requirements for disclosure.
Right.
And that's what the draft bill that's going to be introduced in the State Senate will do. It will not change the exemption section. So there, there's, there's nothing
I think we're all in agreement, send up what we had, because we didn't change it in what we had.
Yes, yes, you did.
We, we changed the and from.
What, what you did is you changed that section by adding elected officials to it.
Right.
Which prior to the workshop.
But I think we decided that they, but I thought our discussion was if they said no, then we were going to send it up with no in it.
If they said, yes.
Right.
If, if they, if they disagreed, if they disagreed with our suggested change, we were going to send it up as the state.
Had originally.
Had originally. Right now, it does not do that. It still contains the elected officials. And what I'm saying is that we need to determine, once and for all, the, the copy that is sent to the state, will it or will it not include elected officials? Based on the discussion from the workshop, it's my understanding that it should go up without including elected officials.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay. And that, and that, I'm, I'm for doing what the state has mandated.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Right, leaving in what the state.
Leaving, leaving the elected officials.
Fight about that later if it doesn't get changed at the legislature, but then we'll look at it.
If that's the consensus, then I would request the town attorney, just send me a revised with that one.
Okay.
Section change back to what the state's original verbiage is. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Dick, I want to thank you for your work on this issue. I know it's been exhaustive, and you just, you're a volunteer, and just thank you very much.
This is, this has been a two-year effort on the, part of the Ethics Commission, and over these two years, we've had many, many meetings and many, many rewrites, and, and I.
Yeah, I don't see Mr. Blasfor and Mr. Groundre's family. Thank you all very much.
And I'd like to point out that, that to everybody, this is really a state issue. They created it. It's a problem for municipalities. The town council and the Ethics Commission by and large have been in total agreement of what needs to be done. The problem is getting the state legislature to do it.
Thanks, Dick.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance 2012-14, which is the, we have the public hearing on the extension of discontinued non-conforming uses. Oh, okay. I, okay. Thanks. Okay. Actually, it's good. We had a letter that was passed around, which you should have a copy of. Basically, we brought it up at the Ethics Commission meeting. It was a letter supporting the letter that the Ethics Commission has already sent. You should all have.
Is that Jamie Raskin?
Yeah.
We got it.
Yeah, but it is, it is. It's right here. Next one down. It's just, yeah, I'm holding the wrong one. It's the letter to Senator Raskin that's in our packets. It was not on the original agenda. That's why I was skipping by it. Basically, the Ethics Commission has drafted a letter to the senator at his request essentially, saying, hey, I want some letters supporting the fact that we need to change this. Ethics asked that the council would do one as well. We had Debbie basically take the one that Ethics drafted up and kind of change it a little so that it reads that it's coming from us, with the suggestion that we have authorized the mayor to go ahead and sign this on our behalf. This is essentially, patterns the, the same stuff that was in the Ethics Commission letter.
So I'll move that, I'll move the council to approve the letter as written.
I'll second that. Okay, I'll, Bob, second it. Any questions, any discussion on this? Just to have the mayor sign it and send it off? Well, I'm waiting to see if we have any discussion.
I'm ready to sign.
I'm waiting.
Well, yes. Yeah. Oh, the original, sorry. Were we voting?
Well, I just, I want to make sure we have a discussion. I'm not sure, David, I want to give David time.
Okay.
I saw this the other day, so.
In any way, shape, or form, I mean, I haven't had a chance to really fully digest this. So does any of the language in here just sort of circumvent what we just suggested?
Well, it, it tells them to change this legislatively. It doesn't change what we were just talking about.
Okay.
And basically, this is what the Ethics Commission sent up, just reworded so that it looks like it's coming from us.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. Moody, send it up. Now we will go back to.
Our regularly scheduled.
The additions. Now we're back on the regular schedule. Ordinance 2012-14, extension of discontinued non-conforming uses. We have the recommendation from planning. Well, first, we need to see, do we have an intro, do we have a, somebody move it in, and a second.
I'll, I'll move it in.
Been moved in. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Bob has seconded it. We have a rec, as far as discussion, we have our recommendation from planning. Chris, actually, Scott, that's you.
Yeah.
Yes, Scott.
So the recommendation from planning, after reviewing everything, they ended up denying for the recommendation of changing this ordinance for extending the number of years from what is currently.
I think it's, is it one year currently?
One year, it's one year currently. One year lapse.
Extending it to five. All right. So we got a negative recommendation from planning on this ordinance. Any discussion?
The only thing that I want to say is, basically, sitting down, I, I'm the one that drafted this. The, the intent behind this was taking a hard look at the economic factors that the economy and many businesses find themselves in. It's extremely difficult to go from doors shutting to moving a new business in, especially when you go through a foreclosure action in a one-year period. I took a look at some of the businesses that were affected within the town, and I was actually surprised to find out St. James Church up here at the, right here at, at, at Main Street.
Old one or new one?
The.
Old one.
Old building, okay.
Actually, made it under this deadline by a matter of. Actually, made it under this deadline by a matter of a couple of weeks.
You mean under the one year?
Under the one year, by a couple of weeks. If they had not gotten in under that timeframe, then their non-conforming use would have expired. We have another property actually over near Conestoga, which again is another church property. It's in a sale sta-, excuse me, it's in a sale status, and I think it's been on the market for possibly two to three months. If we don't get a buyer, or if there isn't a buyer that comes in to purchase that property, again, in the one year happens and expires, then we're looking at having a building that is now in a residential area that could be possibly, you know, rendered unusable. And now we take a look at 1010 South Main Street. Unfortunately, it fell into the foreclosure market and things couldn't actually sit in foreclosure for two, three years before the bank will actually, will put it up for auction. So, my thought process, okay, and when I drafted this, I took the broadest timeframe possible, I threw five years out there. In no way, shape, or form was I stuck to five years. I actually thought it would possibly be a negotiating, you know, to, that maybe instead of just flat out saying no, we might have the planning commission come back and say, you know, well, we can't possibly live for five years, but as our appeals member stood up there and said they had a problem with five years. Well, instead of just flat out saying no, why don't we kick it back and say, well, let's take a look at two years, let's take a look at three years. Again, I drafted this as within the broadest, you know, measure, but at the same time, what I'm trying to do is get a dialogue started to say, these are the economic conditions that are facing us in our community. We have nine properties that are considered non-conforming uses within the town. That's nine businesses. If, God forbid, you know, the economy were to take a bigger downswing and we needed to, you know, to take, take action, again, we're tied by our code of one year. So, my whole thing is, what I'm saying is, I think we should take a look at this, and if it's the timeframe that's the problem, let's change the timeframe.
All right, Scott?
So, just a couple of things. Looking at the timeframe, because I did, the fact that we went from one to five years was a dramatic leap in time.
Exactly.
It was nothing of, let's look at two years, it was jump to five. So, I'm kind of curious how we got to five, but me trying to figure this out on my own, I looked at all the other municipalities and what they kind of do. And so, all the other municipalities actually do less than what we do at one year. They do six months. So, it was interesting. Westminster is one of the exceptions, which they do two years. There is nobody in the state of Maryland that does three years, four years, five years. So, I'm not sure what the deviation would be or why you want to have a unique case.
Again, again, I took what I said as the broadest spectrum, with the idea that I'm open to negotiation, but at no point in time has the planning commission come back and made a suggestion. It was just a flat-out no.
No, I would like to finish.
All right, all right, go ahead.
One, the planning did make a recommendation they denied for five years. Two, to touch on the fact of some of these properties, to state that there's churches and that they could fall with outside that one year. If I'm not mistaken, churches are a special situation, where churches can actually end up getting extensions for those timelines. So even if they went past the one year, they still would be able to have a church on that property. Okay, they're special, so unless you're telling me that 1010 Main Street is now going to open a church and wants to have a special exception, that negates churches.
That's, that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying.
I understand, so-
We're getting a little off.
Exactly.
No, we're, no, we're here, this council, this council discussion at this point. This is, I'm sorry, this is council discussion at this point.
So, the two things about the churches being different, the fact of five years, I mean, I'm for looking at things too. And I think that it was an admirable attempt to try and see if there's a difference, but I'm also somebody who deals with logic and I don't understand why we would want to deviate from one year. If there was a one year, then why would we want to deviate from that in the first place, especially when the norm falls less than one year? We're already an exception to the rule in that place.
Again, the logic, go ahead, Bob, you have your panel for a while.
I think that we're playing catch-up here simply because of the economic climate that we're in right now. This, things turned around in about 2008 and have, regardless of what all the numbers say, okay, you know, we still have high unemployment rates, we still have very low business growth. So, I think that's the whole onus behind David's, David's attempt at five years. I think when we were discussing this, that this property, this particular property at 1010 South Main was, was getting close to four years.
So, well beyond the one year.
Well beyond the one year. And I think this is, this is an attempt to, you know, try to, to try to extend things, not only to help this particular business, but to help other ones that are possibly, I think there were eight more identified-
Better four or five years?
No, they're non-conforming uses.
They're non-conforming uses and could be in the same boat.
Well, there's probably quite a few non-conforming uses.
Well, actually, there's nine non-conforming uses within the town.
Right. That's fewer than I would have expected.
That would actually, that would actually fall under something like that.
But I think the whole thing is the economic climate right now, and, you know, I mean, I live and breathe this stuff every day, where we're operating on 50% of the business that we used to do. And I think most businesses are in the same, and that includes the banks too.
Chris?
The, per code, this residential existing church is a special, is already in the code.
Okay, but here's my ques-
Hold on, Dave, I got the floor. So, you know, the church is already a permitted use there. I think that really the question before us is, you know, it's been talked about over and over again, the only reason why we're discussing this amendment is for 1010 South Main. Prior to this amendment, we had an amendment beforehand for 1010 South Main. That amendment failed because it was written to blow a hole through the code to allow this particular use. The question before us is this, this property is residential. See, and I accept the argument and the philosophy behind trying to help businesses. Bob, no question, I support that argument and the philosophy, that concern. The problem here is, this business, this property is residential. It was known to be residential, it was purchased as residential, and now we're trying to change the code to allow someone to use a residential property as a commercial property. If the business of 1010 South, the business currently being, sorry, if the residents at, the resident at 1010 South Main had gone into the industrial area like everybody else and purchased property in the industrial area, we wouldn't be talking about this. So, I think we need to be true to what we're trying to do here. The point is, a residential property is trying to be used for a commercial use. If the case here had gone to an area zoned industrial commercial, we wouldn't be talking about this.
Mr. Mayor, you got anything to throw in?
No.
All right. Chris, I'd hate to make you turn back to the code section-
Yep.
But the section you were just at, you know, we keep saying residential, but in the residential area, there's actually a whole lot of things that are allowed. Yeah, special exceptions within, I'm just, thank you, Scott, I love these guys.
What's it, oh, wait, wait, I'm here. Is it?
And by the way, we have use of this free because he won this when we were at the convention, so.
110-24.
Yeah, it's got what's allowed there, home occupa-, this is what would be allowed as special exceptions within its districts. When we say residential, doesn't mean you can just do a house here. You could, you could come and apply to have home occupation, nursery school, childcare center, professional office, public utility building, family apartments, veterinary clinics, churches, schools, libraries, community centers, fire rescue stations, elderly housing, parks, recreational facilities, accessory apartments. So there's a lot of things that are allowed, including business uses within our residential zone, if you go through the proper channels. So, I just want to make that clear to everybody who knows that. When we say residential, it doesn't mean it's got to be a house there. There's a lot of things that you can, that you can do in there, and if you can come in and show that you're going to do one of those things, you typically would be able to get permission for that. My problem with the ordinance is it's a five years. Our planning commission said no, they're kind of the emotional side of planning. When I've talked to professional planners who are the logical side of planning, they've also told me five years is a bad idea. So for me, five years is the killer. You know, I'd go back and reevaluate if we were two, but we're not, we're five. So, from my perspective, I would be a no on that. And as one of the citizens, no, you know, I'm sorry, I'm not taking citizen comments at this point, but we did have a 45-minute citizen forum before we got to this on just that topic, so I don't want to go back through everything.
Small clarification, this is actually, we have several zoning classifications residential. This is RE, which actually allows more than, than like a Nottingham or Summit Ridge. I don't want the people in Nottingham and Summit Ridge to read that list and think those uses are actually allowed. This is an older residentially zoned area and there, it's a lot, the allowed uses are a lot broader in this particular area.
Okay, can I suggest we call a question?
Yeah, that's what, we've all had our talk, we're going to vote now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two, four, all opposed, say no.
No.
Three, two to three. All right, let's move on to ordinance 2012-15, budget amendment for parks and rec. This is, it's my understanding-
Is that a Jerry Garcia time?
Yes, it is.
It looks like one, nice.
It's my understanding, David, that the handicap situation has been fairly settled, or we, you know, we know what needs to be done there, Barney, and, so we know that we won't have a dollar issue with that.
Actually, that's an estimate. That's an estimate, so basically, I just want to stick with what my comment was from our December meeting. I basically stated that if an ADA issue did not present itself, I would, you know, gladly support transferring this money. An ADA issue does exist, the town engineer has suggested that it would cost anywhere between $7,500 and $10,000 to, to fix the ADA issue. The pavilion will actually not be granted a use and occupancy until the ADA issue is complete. In my opinion, that leaves too small of a gap for any type of funding. So, it's my opinion that, you know, if, I don't think it's wise at this time to pull money from a budgeted line item for something that has not been completed. Basically, we have this budgeted line item, we have the pavilion that has not even been constructed, we don't know what the final dollar amount is going to be, so therefore, I don't think it's a wise idea. Now, you know, going back to what you had said last month, Peter, if we can find money someplace else, let's, let's pull the 4,500, let's do a full-up budget amendment, and let's fund the, let's fund it from someplace else. But I don't think it's a wise idea at this point in time to pull something from a budgeted item that has not been completed.
Okay, just for formality's sake, I will move that we accept ordinance 2012-15, the budget amendment, just so we, just, I'd introduced it before, so I'll move, we accept it as our second one.
I'll second it.
Okay. I'll bring up what I brought up last month, which is, we're going to fund both of them either way. We need to get moving on this. It could end up just costing us a lot more if we don't do it, so I obviously support it. I guess we've heard David's perspective. Mayor's got his-
I just heard something that kind of flew off an alarm in my mind. Did we, do we not have a budgeted price to build the pavilion? You say we don't know what it's going to cost?
No.
We have a, we have a contract, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we know, we know what the pavilion's going to cost.
At 71,319.
We're not doing timing materials on this project, are we?
Do-
All right, I just want to make sure we know with that. And then, we also know, you gave an estimate, and if I know Barney, his estimate's always a little bit high, but you have an estimate of 7,500 to 10,000 for ADA, so we have an idea, well, that's going to run us as well.
Yeah, and as far as the pavilion goes, you know, most, most of the time, if you have a change order, it's usually for the unknown, what's underground. The footers are done, everything else is from there up, so I feel pretty confident that there wouldn't be any change.
You pretty much can see what you're building right there, and I wouldn't expect change. So I don't think there are those unknowns. I agree with Peter, you're going to fund it anyway, let's stop holding these people up.
Scott?
After seeing the numbers and everything, I mean, you budget for things, you plan for it, we've gotten actual costs now in that indicate that it was a lot less, which is always a good thing than being a lot more, and there's still some padding in there, $5,600 roughly, if anything does go wrong, to offset those costs, so I don't see a reason why we can't do this.
Bob, Chris?
You know, I'm, I was impressed with your statement. I was not on board with this because I did not think it was an emergency. I'm impressed with your statement that we're going to fund both of these, we will find a way to do both of them, so that's where I stand right now.
Can't argue with that.
Can't argue with that.
Chris, you got anything?
What do we, we spent, we just spent, what, $44,000 for the right-of-way for St. Andrews? Or we've already invested-
Something like that, right.
Yeah, I mean, we're investing money for this and it's in the town service, residents want it. Why are we talking about this? Let's fund this and go.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Ordinance, I'm sorry, charter amendment 2013-1, this is the change in our oath.
And if I could, I asked Debbie to check if there's any economy of scale, because we have a couple of issues that are going to be before us for changes.
We need to do them separately.
You have to do them separately, so there is no economy of scale to do things, lump them together.
This should be known as the Blasford Amendment.
Yes.
I love how we name things.
Because this was, this was Rick Blasford's request.
Rick Stone? Yeah, he's in the back.
Yeah, he's in the back. Basically, this is a slight change in the oath of office that we take. Essentially, we will now, in addition to be agreeing to obey the laws of the United States and the laws of the state of Maryland, we also agree that we will obey the laws of the town of Mount Airy. Previously, it just said the United States and the state of Maryland. Now, it really wasn't a loophole because state law says we have to obey town law, but there was a thought that that should be clarified, so somebody to come in here and say, oh, I can disobey the town laws, you know, so. So that's the purpose of this charter amendment. Tom, since it's a charter amendment, we just vote on, we just vote on it here and now, I think.
That's correct.
I will move this in, do I have a second?
I got a second, okay.
We just vote on it here and now, and then it goes through the advertising process and-
Four times, and then one, if I, we don't hear anything, and one, if you'll-
Okay, and I guess, right, and people, citizens could bring a petition if they don't want us to obey town law.
Just to change my question.
Okay, any discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Right here.
One opposed. All right, resolution 2013-1, appointment of a resident agent for the town.
Yeah, it was recently discovered that the, we have on books as resident agent two town attorneys ago, so.
And I love it when people, I nail people on that all the time and get judgments about them and seize their assets before they even know it hit them because of that problem. So we do need to fix that.
And a resident agent, for those who don't know, is who the town appoints to accept service and process of lawsuits. So it's important to have an updated resident agent, because the resident agent who receives service, and if, hopefully timely, will notify those who need to know that the town has been sued. You don't want to be out of date with that, so.
For clarification, who's our resident agent?
Mr. Titus.
Oh, he's on record, he's on record. You are in fact our resident agent.
Well, I mean, town attorney, resident agent is a different thing, it's just, it fell out of date.
This could be a problem.
So, the point is, is that what this does is would appoint me as the new resident agent to accept service, and then whoever succeeds me would, we would change that.
I'd like to have some discussion.
Well, the other option would be- Well, the other option would be to, a lot of towns would probably appoint like the town clerk.
Sure.
With the idea that town clerks might not, you know, change as often.
She's not saying anything.
You're making me nervous. Can we just make a motion?
I will move...
I'll move that in.
Okay, move that we accept, Tom?
Yes.
I will second that. All, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Tom, two.
Does he get a badge or anything?
Next up, unfinished business, adoption of the post issuance policy concerning bonds.
Sorry, I got more.
What is the post issuance?
Yeah, what this is, is relative to the recent bond issuance to raise money through CDA for our projects, the refinancing of some old bonds. One of the things that's important to do is keep your tax-exempt status. And so as a part of that, on advice of bond counsel, it's recommended that the town adopt this post issuance, I mean, post-bond issuance policy, relative to monitoring how, basically, money's spent, things like that, to assure that you're spending it in the right way, that would not run afoul of IRS laws and regulations that would, could challenge your tax-exempt status. So that's basically what it is. Bond counsel indicates to me that, you know, technically, you may not have to adopt this, but she recommends that it's the safer course to have on record this kind of policy in the event that there were any questions later by the taxing authorities.
So this would just be a simple vote to sign off on this, like we're signing off on a contract, basically?
Yes, yes, a vote to approve it, and then signatures by, I think I have each of the council members and the mayor, as well as probably the town clerk as well, so...
Just, I mean, question, Tom, what references were used to develop the policy?
This is a model that comes from bond counsel, that I believe also comes from the CDA itself. CDA is community development.
I'll move, we accept the post issuance compliance policy. Have a second? Bob, seconds? Any questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Up next, water capacity briefing.
Oh, yeah. Could I request a five-minute recess while staff gets ready?
All right, that's fine. We will have a five-minute recess while we get ready for this beautiful PowerPoint presentation.
Death by slide.
I have a presentation on the matter of water supply by councilman Edwards from the Water and Sewer Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Counselor.
Do you want the lights down, Chris?
No.
Okay.
The briefing's information only, so the briefing and material we'll talk about tonight is not a statement or reflection of town policy. It may become that in the future, but right now, this is just information only for everyone on the council, the community. No action is expected this evening on any of the materials. What we see us driving towards in the future, I believe, is the council needing to approve legislation defining how our remaining water supply is allocated, and then the council defining how much water we actually have. So the briefing originally started out relatively small. I had a lot of input. It grew, so if you will allow me, I'll run through the slides without questions, and then when I'm done with the slides, we'll open the floor up to further questions. We'll have the cameras, we'll end from the public, from the end side. We need everybody involved, because clearly, public input is critical to the process. Public input is critical to the master plan and all of the things we're doing right now. The thing we've got to remember as we go down this path, as we look to set our water supply, as we look to develop legislation on how to allocate it, is whatever we do with these decisions within the next month or so, all right, it's going to set the direction for Mount Airy now and in the future, because we all know that water appears to be a limiting factor for growth. Next slide. I've got to recognize a few folks that really, really helped me out on this. Dick Swanson, Chair of Water and Sewers here, and I'll ask Dick this evening to help me with questions from the audience. Gary Nelson, who's not present. Gary was the genesis for a lot of the early research on this when he was on council. He's currently an alternate member of the Planning Commission. Barney Quinn, our professional engineers here this evening, as well as Heather Smith. All of these folks helped me put this information together. However, if there's factual things that aren't exactly correct, you disagree with it, please blame me, not these folks. They just help, you can punch your ire at least, so to speak. Next slide. All right. So first of all, a little bit of background on how, why we're talking about this today. Next slide. So the master plan, the updating of the master plan, that process is going on right now. So what is the master plan? If you're unfamiliar with it, it guides the land use decisions made by the Planning Commission and the town council. Currently, the Planning Commission is developing the master plan. When it's done, it comes to the town council for a vote up or down. Within the master plan, we have two critical elements. One of them is a water resource element we'll refer to as the WRE. The WRE talks about the relationship between water and wastewater capacities with planned growth. So WRE is one critical component of the master plan. The second critical component is our municipal growth element that identifies area for future growth consistent with a long-range vision. So we have to have the MGE and the WRE in sync into the master plan. Next slide, please. So this is some of the information you'll find currently on our website. It's the executive summary of the draft master plan. We are currently updating the master plan. The amount of geographic, community conditions surrounding the town have vastly changed since the last plan was adopted. So we've all, we've allowed this to be here for a few years, and we realize the amount of growth that has undergone, that the town has undergone, the amount of growth in its surrounding areas and how that strings some of the resources. Moreover, again, within this draft, is the community will preserve its limited water resources for the highest priority group. So these are some statements that are in the executive summary of our master plan. Again, just the final draft, they kind of set the stage to say, hey, things have really, really changed. This is our last master plan, and we're water-limited, so we want to reserve whatever water we have left to the highest priority group. Next slide. So water and sewer infrastructure. Water source availability, sewer treatment, capacity will be the limiting factors for new growth. The groundwater well appropriations are mandated by MDE. So for folks that don't know, all of our water in the town comes out of 11 wells, and MDE, the Maryland Department of the Environment, they basically tell us how much water we can pump out of the ground. And over the last 10 years, MDE's been more restrictive on how much water we can extract from the ground, and that's because the recharge area. You have to have so much recharge area in order to have water go back into the ground so we can pump it back out. Next slide. So water and sewer infrastructure. Realize that our wastewater treatment plant is permitted for 1.2 million gallons per day. An additional treatment plant is a difficult undertaking, both financially and physically. So again, this sort of kind of concludes some of the information in the draft master plan, kind of sets up, you know, why we're talking about this stuff. Next slide. My opinion, now, this is my opinion, it may be shared by others, but I'll tell you, this is my opinion. Our limit is going to be the amount of water we can get, not sewer. Why? There are no, there are currently no known sources of financially practical water that push the limit of the wastewater treatment plant. So if money was no object, we could go out and spend $10 million bucks and go build a pipeline to the Monocity group. All right, we're not going to spend $10 million bucks doing that. If money was no object, maybe we could spend $5 million bucks and build some pipelines somewhere to find a well. At this point, what we believe is, in nearby areas, we've kind of exhausted the amount of places that we can get water that we really could afford. Now, the proposed Harrison-Lashere property, which if we do annex, will give us a new well. Even if we do that, we'll still have some excess capacity in our wastewater treatment plant, but now, once again, where do we get the funds? Or do we want to expend taxpayers' funds going to get that, going to get that water? Of course, that doesn't prohibit any developer or builder from bringing water into the town. So if, perhaps if you have land and you want to annex, if you have a well, if you're willing to bring that well into town at your expense, then that's something the Planning Commission will look at, and then, you know, perhaps the town council. By the way, right now, since we've been running these numbers for quite some time, I'll show you this in a minute, technically, we are already in a deficit condition. Technically, we'll talk about that more in a minute. Next slide. If we get this wrong, the mistake is permanent. Water rationing could result during periods of drought. Or if we get this wrong, we could be forced to locate new sources of water at whatever cost. So, I mean, this one here, or, you know, the actions that we're going to take the next month or so, two, three months, however long it takes, is really, really critical. We can't screw this up, because if we do, we're really going to be in bad shape. Next slide. Okay. Why are we trying to act to that? The rationale for water supply capacity evaluation, why don't we go back and we're trying to look at, you know, how much water we actually have? First of all, the primary drivers, we just simply can't complete the master plan, the WRE, the MGE, unless we have a defined water supply. We'd like to facilitate some economic development and target commercial areas, and primarily, that would be downtown redevelopment and center street. You know, again, this is some information from the draft master plan. This information certainly is subject to change, so I'm just providing you information about what we currently believe in the direction we're heading. The water demand has dropped, indicating there may be some additional supply available. We'll get to the hard numbers in just a moment. Next slide. Okay. So now that we've discussed a little bit about how we, how we got here, sorry, now that we've talked about a little bit of backgrounds, why we're looking at the water capacity, what the master plan's about, and the fact that we can't screw this up, let's talk about a little bit of history to lay out from 2004 to today, some of the things that happened. Probably the most important lesson prior to 2004. Back in 2004, shortly prior to 2004, we expected 200,000 gallons on a new, based on a pump test at well number 11. So to go back to 2004, we had a new well, well, sorry, well number 10, and we expected to get 200,000 gallons, because that's how much the pump test, we can successfully pump that kind of water out there. Well, MDE came back and said, well, you don't have enough recharge area. So even though that well is capable of 200,000 gallon flow, we're only going to give you 70,000 gallons. Here's the problem. The town council at that time assumed, hey, we're getting 200,000 gallons, we're going to go ahead and build based on that 200,000 gallons. So the town council at that time didn't wait to discover, yeah, we got the 200,000 gallons, it's permitted, off we go. They assumed the 200,000 gallons would occur, and it didn't. So now, all of a sudden, we find ourselves 130,000 gallons short. We're in trouble. So the shortfall in the water supply forced the town into the consent agreement. We all talked about the consent agreement. Well, this is why it happened. This consent agreement, Greek agreement, allowed us an additional appropriation for short period while we found a new source to make that shortfall. And, you know, by the way, we're technically still under that consent agreement, although we have verbal, verbal confirmation from MDE that they will soon release us from the consent agreement once we complete the proper paperwork. Next slide. So post 2004, council passed the more stringent, strict, adequate public facilities awards in 2007, which laid out, basically, you can't build past what our capabilities are. Additionally, substantial limits were placed on the annual number of houses constructed, I think, for development. The ordinance said you can build no more than 24 homes per development. The town opted not to consider large surface water options. Instead, we sought to attain additional groundwater sources through acceleration, and we installed new water meters, and, you know, some savings was achieved with that and conservation. Next slide. Post 2004, well number 11 comes online in 2011. So now we meet the demands that the consent were previously placed on the town, and the cost of that one was about a million bucks. What else happens? Water becomes more costly to consumers the last few months. The council has seen some, you know, significant amount of pushback in the community, certainly complaints and concerns that with the last water rate increase, when folks were really, you know, bothered by that. I was certainly bothered by it as well. But, you know, the problem was that the Water and Sewer Department had been allowed to run a deficit for many, many years. That, the departments, you know, and they were making up the deficit from property taxes. Property taxes should not go to bay for the Water and Sewer Department. So the rates were increased to run that department at cost. Next slide. So water consumption has declined. Why is the big question? Some of the opinions from staff, cold storage was a very large water user, they're no longer in town. Again, the rates increased, that likely corresponds with a temporary decrease in demand. A lot of debate over that. I mean, look at the price of gasoline. Gasoline goes up, yeah, we try to conserve, but frankly, you know, if gasoline goes up, you still buy gasoline, you got to get to work and do the plan. So, I mean, there's been a lot of philosophical arguments amongst folks in town, folks on staff, planning commission, Water and Sewer Commission, whether or not the increase in rates corresponds to a temporary decrease in demand. Of course, the economic downturn of the economy is likely a contributing factor. And then ongoing water conservation campaign implemented several years ago that promoted water safety. Next slide. Okay, the numbers. So next, we'll go through what the actual flow numbers are. Next slide. So this I chart, which will drive you crazy if you've looked at it long enough, of the, actually, is the laser? Yeah, I'll just leave it now. It's okay. Something could have talked about. Okay. So in this chart right here, these are the, this is the year, and over here is the flow, the average flow in gallons per day. So this is how much in gallons per day we pumped out of the water, averaged over the year. So you'll see in 2004, that's our high year, 766, almost 767,000 gallons. Now, as you work your way down the chart, you'll notice that, and, sorry, if you reference over here, you'll see the year-to-year difference. It's like column that was added. So as you work your way down the chart, you'll see it kind of, sort of, remains steady up until 2007, and then we start to decline in consumption. Now, you'll notice roughly, over here is the GDP, gross domestic product. All right, yeah. You'll notice that, well, you know, okay, we've got a decline in 2008, GDP's down, GDP really, perhaps, goes down in 2009, and you'll notice that the water flow, you know, the water consumption sort of decreases as things get bad. You can also correlate that against rainfall, rainfall as well. Now, the reason why this I chart is so important, there are several ways to look at how we're going to determine what our water flow number is. Based on the consent agreement in 2004, we assume that the water flow is 766,000. Again, that's based on the consent agreement. That's the number that we are using today. But any reasonable person will look and say, okay, well, I mean, that's pretty high, and clearly, the consumption has started to decline since then, but, you know, you got this spike up here in 2007. So in this column, one way to calculate how much water we're consuming is that highest year use, 2004, again, that's what consent based on. Another way to look at it is, we'll pick the four years, since 2004, we'll pick the four years of highest usage, and we'll average that, so there's where that number comes up. And then another way to look at it is, we'll just average the last five years, and then we come up with that sort of number. So here are three different ways that one, we calculate current system capacity, and again, once we're done with the presentation, just hold awake, we'll have it posted on the website. Next slide. This I chart talks about where our current water situation is. So if we start here, the current, this is our current situation. So based on the 2004 number, all right, I'm sorry. So first of all, we're allowed to pump 927,000 gallons of water a day out of the wells. So that's our total consistent capacity, 927. Now, it turns out that the adequate facilities protection ordinance, in a sense, derates this number by 12%. The APFO says, once we hit 88% of usage, that's it. We are reaching inadequate, you can't build anymore. So based on our own town code, you got to take the 927, and you got to kind of derate it to 815. So 815 really is the supply. That's how much we pump out of the ground. So you'll hear, you know, folks... So, you'll hear, you know, folks saying, we're running out of water, we're not running out of water. No, we're not running out of water. We're not running out of water because you really have a 12% reserve built in, but that reserve is mandated to us by our own town code. All right. If I go down this column, I look, take the 2004 number, the 766, I include these numbers, which is already built and used and committed, we come out with our total demand. Eh, oh, thanks, wrong, yeah, jump to 2004. So, these numbers are what we've used since consent. Here's our total demand. You'll notice that from 2004, again, we use this number as the consumption 2004, today we show a deficit of 17,000 gallons. So, when we've been telling folks, you can't, we, you can't develop, you can't annex because we're out of water, this is why, because technically, not technically, according to our own code, we're 17,000 gallons in the hole right now if we stand for that. All right. Now again, we're not running out of water because, remember that, we're allowed to pump 927, but we derate that according to the adequate facilities, we're down to 17. All right. The other two, other couple of columns here are different ways of calculating. So, in other words, before I showed you, hey, let's just take the high four, we'll average the high four, here's the number, if you average the high four, then we have 10,000 gallons left to hand out. If we say, okay, we're just going to average the last five, then we have 90,000 gallons to hand out. And if we just pick the year 2008, we have 61,000 gallons to hand out. So here's a couple of different ways to count that out. I'll go through the rationale in a minute as to what, what the two suggestions are, how to set the number based on that. Next slide. For future consideration, if we include Liger Harrison, so Liger Harrison is the proposed annexation north of town, so, and as already mentioned by the fire company, you know, there's been some talk about meetings and whatnot, the town council's been engaged with the county quite a period of time in meetings, you know, out by law, the meetings are public now, to see if we'll, we can reach an agreement to annex Liger Harrison. If we annex Liger Harrison, there's a well there that we believe, and remember I said believe, I didn't say we get this, because we don't want to go back to 2004 where, you know, the council believed in good faith they'd get 200,000 gallons, then we get it. We believe we'd get 152,000 gallons extra from Liger Harrison. However, the county, if we do Liger Harrison, the county wants 40,000 of that for economic development. Anyway, what we show is significantly more water to hand out in the town if we go ahead with Liger Harrison. Again, that's a big deal. So that's just an example of what would happen if we go against Liger Harrison. Now, all right, next slide. So, critical points. Current system capacity, again, set by the 2004 water demand number, but remember, we kind of derate that number because we've got to add the margin per AFPL. We currently show a deficit using the 2004 number. Again, I'll emphasize, we're not running out of water. By showing a deficit, what I mean is, we've already gone into this 12% margin. We can't consider Liger Harrison annexation into the current water plan, we simply don't know what's going to happen. Also, the municipal, the, 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 master plan.
Master plan.
The WRE, the MGE can't wait that long. And, you know, let's keep in the back of our mind, revisit the lesson from 2004, let's not allocate water that we don't have the license to allocate. Next slide. All right, recommendations. Two recommendations, I guess I threw a quote up for Thomas Jefferson because this, putting together this briefing's sort of been a journey for me. I've had the pleasure and the opportunity to talk to a number of folks across town, lots of folks with very, very strong opinions. One of the things I love about this town is how folks really care about it, they really want to nurture it, they want to grow it, but they don't want to hurt it. So it's been a real pleasure, so, and continues to be. So, I just want to emphasize here, you know, according to this quote, hey, here's two different recommendations. Yep. So not personal, here are the recommendations, let's look at what they are, and then maybe we can reach a consensus on a path. Next slide. The recommendations are presented, that's not to say there aren't other recommendations, there certainly are. All right. What I'm presenting, in my opinion, are the best supported recommendations on setting a number. The recommendations, again, are based on many, many meetings with water sewer commission, planning staff. Next slide. Hey, first of all, water and sewer recommendation. Water and sewer recommends using 2008 as the base year. 2008 is the year of the highest usage during the last five years. And it's more, according to water sewer, is more representative of the current and future water demand. MDE recommends using the year, using this in the last five years. So this is based off of an MDE recommendation. Next slide. Again, more, more information, the rationale behind water and sewer, we've thought over this for a long, long period of time. Over the last several years, the town's increased water sewer rates, limited significant annual deficit, sewer departments, studies predict that Mount Air, studies predict that Mount Air experience, increasing rates results to reduce water consumption. Myself, I did a little research, and, for example, I found some studies that reference the city of Boston. The city of Boston increased their water rates, the city of Boston had a decrease in consumption. So, I mean, there are studies, certainly lots of studies out back there. Next slide. Water and sewer commission instituted a program of education on conservation to reduce the consumption. Water and sewer also drafted a tier system of restrictions such that when we have a critical water conditioning, water conditions such as drought, that we can ration water. This was done back in 2007. So, water and sewer recommendation, use the 2008 numbers as the base, don't average over the last five years, that provides an additional 61,000 gallons of water. So that's water and sewer's recommendation. Next slide. Staff had some counterpoints against us. There's no data to support what the future demand will be. Okay, we just don't know. We just don't know what the future demand's going to be. Staff wonders, is the reduction in demand temporary? I mean, if it's a behavior, are consumers going to adapt to the new price? Are they going to adapt as the economy gets better, businesses pick up, and maybe we'll return to previous consumption? A quote from staff, staff is concerned is that the release of the recommended amount of available capacity. Again, staff's quote, the recommended release of the available capacity from the water sewer commission may place the town at risk of having a shortage of future. Now, I mean, staff's position is based on, hey, look, it took us from 2004 to 2011 to get us out of consent agreement. Okay? We got ourselves into a hole, it took us a million bucks and a lot of time and trouble and agony to get us out of this hole. Please don't dig another hole and get a second. Now, and I'm not saying that the water sewer recommendation, I agree with that. I'm just saying that staff has a tendency to be extremely conservative, they're conservative because they want to make sure we don't get in trouble. That's, that is what staff's counterpoint's marked. Next slide. The staff recommends a more conservative approach. All right. Current 2004 capacity shows a deficit of 17,000 gallons. Water, yeah, negative. Water and sewer recommends releasing 61,000. Staff notes, as I did earlier, that the sixth prior year, 2007, that number, which wasn't used in the water sewer's calculations, is just basically identical with 2004. So if you go six years back, look, we're just right where we were in 2004. So staff's recommendation is split the difference. The way staff views the number right now is, we're 17,000 gallons in the hole. Now again, analyticized, we're not running out of water, but you run the numbers, and according to the town code, we're 17,000 gallons in the hole. Staff says split the difference, take the 17, 61, divided by two, let's release 22,000 gallons. Next slide. It's a more conservative approach. Staff says, look, wait and determine the impact as the economy improves, because that's the big unknown here. What happens when the economy improves? And then we can adjust to release more, justify. Staff also questions, hey, why are we rushing, rushing to release more water? What's the push to get out there and throw another 61,000 gallons? And, you know, again, remember, if we get this wrong, we're going to be in a little hurt. We don't want to be. Next slide. Okay, way ahead. Next slide, next slide. So, now I'll bore you with four slides from material extracted from, our town attorney has brought an opinion two days ago during the Super Bowl, right? Did you write this before or after? I think the opinion also predicted what, for Ravens, we're going to, well, we'll be Super Bowl Eve, thank you. So our town attorney, our town attorney who is now able to, yeah, was busy Super Bowl Eve writing this opinion. All right. So, a couple things. Here's, according to the town attorney, according to this opinion, town council, in consultation with town engineer, can determine the methodology to calculate the current system capacity. So according to the county, the town attorney, it's the town council that can set this number, the current system capacity. So, if you go in the water sewer recommendation, the council would set it at 61,000 and some change. If you go in staff's recommendation, the council would set it at 22,000 gallons, perhaps it's all well, the county does, the council wants them to be. So, the council has the ability or the legal authority to set the number. Next slide. Now, the kicker here is this, we want to make sure that, and this is something that planning is currently working on, we want to make sure that when we set the water number, we have a means to allocate it. So, if you go back to the beginning of the briefing that I went through rather quickly, the master plan says, hey, if we have new water, we want to allocate it in means for economic development, we want to, we want to allocate the water towards area of high priority economic growth. We do not, what's unsetted here is, we do not want to allocate the water for residential growth. And, I mean, I think that's a theme that some of us on council may have run for, or ran for election, that we wanted to, we wanted to facilitate economic growth in town, we wanted to use available resources for that, jobs, restaurants, shops, things like that, not for residential development. So, one of the things here is, we've got to make sure that before the council sets this new number, before the council declares we have 30,000 gallons of water available, that we put in place legislation that allows us to allocate that based on some guidance. Next slide. So, other prob, other issues, not issues, not problems. Right now, there's no restriction imposed by MDE or anybody else as to how we calculate the water, which I find kind of interesting, and Barney Quinn has validated this. We're free to set the number. The council is free to set this number based on, because there is no criteria. So, I find that kind of amazing, but, but, but that's where we are for that. There is no regulation guideline put out by MDE on how we calculate this. Next slide. So, according, the town, the town attorney recommends that we reach out to MDE and MML, the Maryland Municipal League, for literature on allocation methodology. So, in other words, don't rush out and declare a number, 61,000, 22,000, whatever it is. Oops, my, please, I, don't rush out and do that. It's well worth asking MDE and MML, hey, do you guys have any literature? Can you help us out on allocation methodology? So, and then, of course, the town attorney also tells us, hey, before you go ahead and do this, once you pick a number, before you go ahead and do this, hey, get together with MDE and see if they'll comment one way or another on your, your strategy. Next slide. Okay. So next slide, way ahead. Next slide, I would think, I would ask that the council consider some of the information presented, and try to reach a consensus. And I'm using the word consensus because I do not recommend, I would strongly recommend against the council setting a hard number. So let's reach a consensus on what we think the number should be. We'll have the town staff go ahead, go ahead and validate all the calculations against source documentation. In other words, so let's say we pick a number, we pick 30,000 for an example, for example. I still want to make sure that, one last time, because we don't want to make a mistake. I want the staff to go back and, again, validate all the data that we have, validate this is what we're pumping out of the ground, validate this is what our consumption is, this is exactly how much we've permitted and used, or we've permitted and not used. We want to make sure those numbers are rock solid. Once we've done that, take that information along with the council's recommendation, send it over to MDE and MML to see if there's any information on allocation methodology. Once we do that, we're on solid ground, and then we send our proposed water plan to MDE. And again, I'm saying proposed water plan because I'm not recommending that we set a number at this point. Next slide. While the council's doing that, trying to declare the water supply number, the planning commission, which has already started this, they're busy developing legislation to permit the allocation of water, again, based on the current draft of MP and MGE. In other words, what we've talked about, the current draft master plan says, we're going to allocate the existing water to, again, things like, for economic development, Main Street redevelopment, Center Street, not residential. So planning is busy doing that. Once the council adopts that water allocation legislation, then the council can formally adopt a new water supply, has been vetted by staff and MDE, and I think we're on solid ground. Excellent. That's it. It wasn't that bad, I watched. So, I mean, at this point, you know, I'll open the floor, I guess with the council's presence permission, I'll open the floor to questions. I think, I think it's important to take questions both from the council and from the public, and I'll ask Dick Swanson from the water and sewer commission to help me out with that recommendation and to solve any legal issues. And again, the focus here should be a discussion on water, water supply, not on planning issues. Granted, planning clearly is linked directly to the water issue, but right now, we're talking about a water issue, not on planning. Would you have no questions? I don't.
Thanks, Chris, for the presentation. I think that, you know, I want to point out one comment first, is that planning is not linked to the water issue per se, they're dependent upon it so that they can finalize the master plan and start to determine allocations, rezoning, et cetera, and finish the master plan in a timely endeavor. A couple of the questions that I just had, and I understand we may not have the answers, but maybe staff can end up finding out. And a lot of numbers have been thrown around historically in the past, we're in a deficit, we've got water to go spend on all these different projects, let's figure out where we need to spend it, or do we need to go tap into a new source of water? I find it interesting that we're using, you know, a number from 2008, when we had a drought in 2007, and I don't think we've had a drought 2008 to present.
There's actually, there's, one of the things that we corrected in this, the original draft of my slides actually came from material, again, in the draft master plan, that said back in 2004, we had a record drought. It turns out that our town engineer went back and looked at the data, there was no record drought in 2004. It just doesn't exist. The town engineer has the data. So we've always been saying, hey, 2004, we had this massive drought. No, we didn't. We didn't have a record drought in 2004. So, part of the purpose of the death by slides, dog and pony show, is once and for, and the reason why we've worked towards this lot, towards this spreadsheet with numbers, is you know, I've seen probably 10 or 15 different pieces of paper, all with different numbers. So, okay, what's the ground truth? So part of the reason we're doing this is, okay, this is ground truth, this is what we believe is accurate as far as consumption, supply, demand, so, you know, this is the basis that we work off of, so I.
No, and I, I think those numbers are good. I would ask staff, did you look at the unused properties or allocation of properties using water at that time? I.e., you said coal storage was a large water consumer, which could have drove 2004 number, even though we may not have been in a drought, in conjunction with the other variables such as GDP, utilization, the rainfall number, which I seem to fall all over the place, so, I mean, depending on GDP and people are feeling, you know, I have more resources to burn now because I'm rich, you know, is that feast or famine mode? I'm in a feast mode versus a famine mode in lean times. Did you look at the trends that were going over the 10-year period for that, and see if there was any correlation between all those factors?
Well, we can, let me answer with a quick, first of all, coal storage, they used approximately a million gallons a year, and if you divide that by 365 days a year, what does that come to? 3,000, 4,000 gallons? So when you're looking at these numbers and say, how many gallons a day do you use, and you see 600 and something, or 700 or 800, you're talking 3,000. So, coal storage is really insignificant to the overall picture of what we're talking about, so I think we should really eliminate that.
They used, they basically used in a year, a whole, a whole day's worth, but over a year, approximately.
Yeah, yeah, a little over a day's worth in a year, right. So, and, and they use, by the way, most of their water in the summertime, and they use very, very little water in, in the wintertime. And even that, when you talk about how you get your water spike in, in the summertime, even that didn't make that that didn't make that much of a difference in it. So, the cold storage, I don't, I don't think is an issue at all. The other thing is drought. The last drought that the town of Mount Airy saw was 1999. There has not been a drought in this town since 1999. There have been years where there was more rainfall than other years. What I did was, I went back and I took a look at those years of where you had the low rainfall, and somebody said, well, that's a drought year, 2007, for example. What you find out is that the pattern of water, the pattern, I'm sorry, of rainfall, if you get very little rainfall in the, in the winter, very little rainfall at the end of the calendar year, and a reasonable amount of rainfall in the summertime, your water usage is not going to change significantly, even though the total water rainfall for the year may be very low. That's the kind of thing we saw when I looked at the data by month in those years. So, there's really very little correlation when you take a look at the rainfall during the warmer months that affect water usage by residents, that and, and the rainfall.
So, so going off of that deck, and again, further evaluation, if you have three variables here, and you're telling me that you can't use these variables to explain deviations between the years, where you're going from, I think the largest number up there is, what, over seven hundred thousand?
Two thousand.
Down to six thirty-two, the average I did off the cuff was like six hundred and ninety-one thousand. So, even using that, how do you explain all the deviations from year to year? It's so dramatic, something is driving that.
Right, so here's the, here's the, here's the challenge, I'd beat these numbers to death. We could run multivariate statistics, we could do whatever we want to do, historical differential equations, let's make up some mathematic term that they use in the movies, and we're not going to get any. I think the bottom line is you're not going to get it. And, and the genesis of the staff recommendation is go slow.
Exactly.
Because the penalty for making a mistake is extreme. And there's nothing that says, there's nothing that says, because we could, I'm sorry, because we could argue these numbers forever, and we have, we've argued these numbers over and over and over and over again, and we can't correlate any. The bottom line is that, okay, we can't afford to make a mistake. If we bring ourselves into some, into a managed situation, where we have legislation from planning that allocates based on priorities, we have the council establishing the number in consultation with the town engineer, okay? So, we do twenty-two thousand gallons. Now, we wait two years, and we look to see what the economy has done. Has the economy increased? Has the economy gotten better? Yes. Has water demand increased? Yes. Okay, now we see some sort of correlation, and then we can release some.
So, the, I think that's, you know, commendable, you're taking a baby step, if you will. You're looking at a smaller versus a large jump. And I think that's smart, but my only comment is that you're jumping forty thousand, roughly twenty-two and seventeen. So, you're at a negative seventeen deficit according to code, or you're at, hold on, or you're at twenty-two thousand plus, let's release.
Yeah.
It's a forty thousand range. Now, that's a drop in the bucket, if you will, for water. We've also discussed, I think, something that's not up here that I've heard, which is growth of consumption, i.e., properties are asking for more water, we've got developments, et cetera, those types of things, are those calculated in?
Yes, they are.
Just let me, let me, so, one of the things I didn't put in the slide that you're accurate on, we show, and this is something the staff brought up, we show currently a deficit of seventeen thousand. If we release sixty-one, based on water sewer recommendation, in effect, you're releasing sixty-one plus seventeen, that's what you're releasing, you're releasing seventy-eight thousand. If we release twenty-two, you got to add the seventeen to that, because we already show a deficit, so you're releasing forty, right, right. So, I mean, I, when staff first brought this up to me, I kind of wrapped my head around it and said, wait, you know, you're negative numbers, and I don't, I don't do real good with negative numbers. But, your point is, yeah, is valid, and which makes me personally even more worried about releasing the sixty-one, go slower.
And if I may, I just point out, but, the whole key to what we're talking about here in terms of how much water is available for in-town, within the town limits, develop and redevelop, and, and that's the only key line in, in that other chart that came up with the sixty-one and the seventeen deficit.
I'll get, I'll get.
Yeah, it's, so, the question really is, if you take, if you'd actually go back to that for a second.
You want to go back to the supply?
Yeah.
Got it.
If, the question about how much water is available is one of, if you use this method, which gives you your twenty, your, what was that number, twenty thousand, whatever it was?
That's a ten, you get ten.
Gives you ten thousand. So, you're doing an average of this versus this, but, go back to the other one. You're calculating, and you've looked at this. The Water and Sewer Commission looked at this, and the, the difference is, one, very simple question you have to answer, is the, are these years more indicative of the future than these years are indicative of the future, or any mathematical combination of all of this? The Water and Sewer Commission said very simply, these years, we believe, because of the significant reduction in the use of consumption of water, are more indicative, but we're going to be conservative. Rather than averaging these, we're going to take the highest year. And the difference there says that you are giving thirty thousand gallons in addition to the twelve percent that was taken off the top of our appropriation as the cushion to say that we believe that if this is the appropriate number to use, that we'll yield sixty-one thousand gallons, that we have sufficient cushion, that that's not a mistake. The future is not going to, this, this trend is not going to suddenly go up back to this. If it goes back, it's going to go up to your sixty-eight, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So, you've already got the cushion in there. So, you answer the question, what is the actual number representing the best estimate we can make of how much water is available today for development and redevelopment within the town limits? No annexations here, within the town limits. Then you go to the next question, which is the planning and zoning, and that question is, how would you allocate that available water amongst your different priorities? And when, when Chris says release, you may come up and say, you know, that sixty-one thousand gallons that the Water and Sewer Commission thinks is an accurate number, how much is available, then you go back and say, how much of that are you going to release? And how much of what you're going to release are you going to allocate to the, the different priorities? And that's, that is a planning commission issue that if, and the Water and Sewer Commission is simply saying, this is the number we think represents the amount of available water. The one other factor I'd like to point out about this is, if you use the seventeen thousand deficit, or you use the twenty-two thousand, or you use the sixty-one thousand, and that's going to be taken by the planning commission and, and considered in the master plan, in the WRE, I think the question you also have to ask yourself is, by which number I use, what is my master plan saying, my WRE saying about the ability of this town to be able to provide for development and redevelopment within the town limits, particularly when you're talking about your economic base, your commercial sector? What are you saying? So, you want to take a realistic, quasi-conservative number that you could use, that is going to say to everybody, this is fair, it's reasonable, it's conservative, and by the way, it provides for the economic growth and stability of this town, which is critical, critical to the long-run success of this town.
Let me do, it'd be interesting, Tom, can I turn the floor back a little bit?
There's one, there's one calculation or one, that I don't see any difference between 2004 and 2012 in the number of customers.
Small growth, very small growth.
For that, for that entire time, between 2004, so.
Correct.
It's small. So, let me just.
So, that's, that's not really a factor.
No.
Any, any other questions from the public? Yeah, shoot. Could you just announce who you are and?
Would there be, with the legislation that's needed for how it's allocated, would there be anything approached about, with everything being focused on non-residential development, would there be any inclusion of exceptions for?
Urgency.
Or hardships and things like that?
All right, so I'll, I'll, I'll give you an opinion, and it's an opinion only. Right now, the council, I believe the council's looking to the planning commission, because they're the ones currently in the process of developing suggested, a suggested ordinance to the council. So, really, and again, I just want to focus here on just water, so that would be a question for you perhaps at the next planning commission meeting, or a suggestion to them to see how that goes. Mr. Husher.
The new water meters that we put in, what year did they come in?
Two thousand four, two thousand five?
No, they were later than that.
Two thousand seven, I think.
Seven?
Two thousand seven.
Yeah.
Six or seven.
Is that a factor? Were there any actual problems with the old?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Barney, but as meters get older, the particular older types of meters, they tend to run slower and actually didn't measure accurately, and the new meters are more accurate, which bottom line means that, yeah, some of, your amount of water usage went up to some extent.
We were pumping and not billing, that was the real key.
Pardon?
We were pumping the same amount of water, we know we pump, but the meters meant that we weren't billing for water, we were pumping.
Yeah, the measurement comes out of where we pump, not the.
Not, not at the home.
Yeah.
Herb Hart, Southern Three North Ward, Florida. Is the town still set on only using well water?
Um, yes.
Why?
The costs to build pipelines somewhere are just prohibitive. They're prohibitive. Tens, what was, what was the Potomac, the?
Well, I'm not thinking of that far. I cannot understand why the reservoir at Gillis Falls.
It's, that one's off the table.
I know, I know, it's off the table, but.
If they build it, we'll be glad to tie into it, but.
Yeah, but.
I think.
Why is it always looking to somebody else to do it?
Well, because.
It's not ours. We can't build that.
It's, it's, what I'm trying, what I was trying to do here is bound the problem, and the Gillis Falls thing's been talked about forever, we don't own the land, the cost of pulling.
Well, the county owns it, they haven't been able to build it.
It doesn't seem practical, so it's.
The other thing I put out, Ed, if you bring in Harrison LaShire, the recharge rights for those acreages insufficient to really significantly increase the amount of water, and as, you would also need to gain the recharge rights from Carroll County for that area out there, Gillis Falls. And if you did that, and you've got enough recharge rights, that MDE could actually increase the permit by the estimated total hundred and fifty thousand gallons, absent getting those recharge rights from that area, you're, the best you're going to get is about thirty thousand in total. So, that's, that is another factor playing into the Gillis Falls. I'll mention one other thing, there were a number of wells drilled out there and the, the, for groundwater, and they just couldn't yield enough water to make it cost-effective to actually put the wells in and then run the pipes all the way to Mount Airy. But.
It's not good.
No, it's not.
The other, the other pertinent fact here is, let's say that, let's say, let's say we did Harrison LaShire. Again, rough numbers, because I haven't calculated this on purpose, because I'm trying to bound the problem to what's practical right now, because we have to move forward. But, if we do Harrison LaShire, we are now up to a million, one point, let's just round it, one point one million gallons of supply. Now, the wastewater treatment plant's only good for one point two. Let's just say we lose ten percent, you know, because people sprinkle, water leaks, things like that. So, let's just round this down to a million gallons. We have two hundred thousand gallons left, then the wastewater treatment plant reaches capacity, and then we're done, because the, there's no land to expand the wastewater treatment plant, and certainly no money to do it. So, even if Gillis Falls came true, we're, you know, we're two hundred thousand gallons left, and then it doesn't matter. But again, I mean, I appreciate the comment, the point here, though, is, I'm trying to bound the problem to what is practical now so we can move forward, because frankly, there's been too much talk and not enough action, and, sorry, I'm action-oriented, let's go, here's where we are today, let's make a decision, let's plan, let's move forward. Now, what I'm suggesting.
Chris, run the floor, so.
What I'm suggesting is, and again, you'll see that the Water and Sewer Commission and I, if you don't see it now, you'll, you know, you'll see that we disagree, it's an honest disagreement on what we, what we should set the number of. Here's my point, my point is, we don't have any hard data that tells us, we don't, we don't know what the future demand's going to be, we don't have hard data that says. I see the trends, the economy's bad, I'm worried, and I've been reminded over and over again, do you want to be the councilman that released too much water and put us back in a hole ten years from now? And I don't.
Councilman Erich.
With that, with that, is there any more questions?
Well, I wanted to give a short answer to his question, I think we've all overlooked. Back in 2007, they actually did a study on water options. Surface water was looked at, pipeline was looked at, and groundwater, which is a moderate source of water, that was studied by a professional engineer, and the groundwater source water option came back. So, to let you know, this wasn't just an idea, so I came up with, it was actually studied back in 2007, with water being, well, water being the preferred option, for a variety of reasons.
One of which was cost.
Does that explain to you? Hem, Mount Airy.
Alls I can say is, there was a professional study done on a pipeline, this and that, and to, if I could respond to your hem, Mount Airy, it depends on what you want, depends on what people want. I encourage you to read the 2007 survey, and I don't think we're looking for unlimited growth or a lot of growth. While we are seeking a moderate water supply for some good infill, building out downtown, I don't think anybody's seeking a huge water supply for growth that the citizens apparently do not want.
And, and sorry, we are hemmed in, it's the wastewater treatment plant, one point two million gallons, we're hemmed in. So, we, at some point, hit that limit, we're hemmed in. So, very cognizant of what you're describing, but again, I'm trying to move us in a direction right now that's practical, that's doable, so, but just, any more questions?
Did Bob give his question?
Yeah. Chris is absolutely right, we, our cap is the wastewater treatment plant. Over the next couple of years, the challenge to Mount Airy is, how would you bring enough water capacity into the town to provide water for all in-town, currently in-town vacant lots, if they, the owners so desire to build them out, residential or commercial, and provide for the redevelopment? And what that really means is that you take an existing property and you change it in some way that increases the demand for water, within the folks that are already in town. So, the long-range objective, regardless of what number you use here, should be a program to say, over the next five or eight years, to look for sources where you can bring water into the town to meet that overall demand without exceeding the wastewater treatment demand, or capacity, I should say. You need to do that, and, and the Water and Sewer Commission feels that that should be looked at over the next couple of years, because there's an obligation to the citizens of this town, or the people that own property of this town, that if they want to develop that property, then the town should have the infrastructure available so they can do that.
I have, I have one question, Chris, can we go back to the chart that showed all the different years?
Yep.
There we go. What's going through my head sitting here is trying to figure out, as Dick mentioned, is this drop that we see at the end realistic to rely on as a permanent drop, so that it's reasonable then to look at something in the last five years as being our window? What would make it drop then? Certainly, population hasn't dropped, certainly hasn't dropped. I, I've only been able to come up with two things that could be causing that drop, and maybe you guys have some more. I know that we did a sub. that could be causing that drop, and maybe you guys have some more. I know that we did a substantial patching. You know, we, we hired guys to drive the roads and dig up the pipes and patch leaks in the line. So, obviously, we've got some savings there. I'm also curious as to how much new appliances are falling into this, because if you buy a new washing machine now, I mean, they use like half the water of what the one that you bought ten years ago uses. So, we may see a permanent drop down as we see appliances turn over. I don't know. I'm leaving that to someone.
You're absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Peter, let's take, let's take now, if we were talking about this last month, if we talked about this in January, sorry, December, if we talked about this in December, this number wouldn't appear. That number would.
Right.
So, you know, once again, you know, as we've discussed, yeah, appliances maybe some, conservation some, INI some, but my conclusion out of this, again, which differs from Water and Sewer, is, you know, let's go slow. Let's, because there's, again, staff will tell you, there's no basis on what future demand will be. And the, the, I understand the economic message. We release enough so we can start things like downtown redevelopment. But once again, you know, five of us are sitting here. Do you want to be the one that puts this problem?
But I only thought, I can only think of two. Are there other reasons? I guess the Water and Sewer, why would we rely on these lower numbers?
Could we see an extra column put in there for water rates and watch how the water rates have increased?
What I was just going to say, this is the amount of water pumped out of the ground, not the amount of water that's metered. The difference is lost water, if you will. Do, do you still have lost water reports that you could actually show the, the reduction that we've seen over the, these years? Because we had some significant lost water. In other words, water that was pumped out of the ground and didn't make it to the meter, but.
I said, two thousand and ten, we did the INI and the pipe refits and all that stuff. But, I mean, back to Dave's question, you know, you, you have some trends there that I don't think you're uncovering yet. And I would caution using averages is always the fallacy.
We're not recommending, we're not recommending an average.
You are when you end up using the last five years, and you just pointed out to me, if you didn't end up counting December, you would have used two thousand and seven, which is a hundred and twenty thousand more than two thousand and twelve.
Right.
So, that is a dramatic.
Yes. Let me, Scott, given the, given the time.
The difference between this and this.
Let me, let me suggest that, so, here's the information. Why don't we take a buck to digest it, come back, go over it.
Well, could, could somebody address my question? Could we put an extra column in there just to take a look at what the water rates, as the water rates go up, see if they're, I mean.
Right. But remember, Dave, that the water, you're, you're, it's almost as, it's almost, it's not a logarithmic problem. It's almost like a logarithmic problem. Because now the water rates are tiered.
Right.
So, how do you want to, see now, again, so now we end up with five or six different.
Right. Well, no, I, I see what you're saying. I, I guess what I, I guess what I'd just like to see is, if, if we could have like a, what an average water rate, how the average water rate increases.
Well, I think.
And then just see if there's some correlation there.
I can tell you the total amount of water billed each year, and the percentage increase, for example, in the rates each year. Would that give you some indication as to whether there's some relationship?
It's just something to take a look at.
And, and I would say from the other side is, because we're talking about metered versus pumped, I would suggest that maybe we could develop the numbers as to how much, what the loss of water number is per year.
Dave, here's the, just, here's the, the problem. Right now, we can't develop, we can't build, we're turning everybody away. And we're gonna, we, we could do this, certainly. And then next month, we're going to add another statistic. And then next month, we're going to add another statistic. And then, and then six months have gone by, and we still can't develop anything. Planning Commission's still hung, because we haven't figured, you know, we haven't given a number. It's. So, you've got to move.
No, and I agree. I'm, I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I, I guess.
He's just saying, since we're going to do it next month, just give us some more data.
I want data.
Chris, if I could, I just want to tell you, I have to applaud you, the Water Commission, town staff. I understand you and Heather stayed working with Chris till nine thirty the other night.
And Barney.
Well, I was looking at Barney when I said it. I want to, I want to applaud you for your efforts.
He's looking for overtime.
I, I agree with, I agree with Chris. It's time to move forward. We never did a comprehensive study like this that I'm aware of that really factored in. I think, Chris, your approach, you're handling this perfectly. You're putting it out there. People can digest it. Just a few quick comments for, for the public. I, I think Dick and I have, I, I think we have more in common with this belief than, than, than we are, than we're a part on this, but it is definitely important for the economic development of the town to get some more water and to get some revitalization. However, we're not in a deficit as far as actually needing any. We have the lady that does our accounting here. Our, our financial picture is very strong. We're not going under if we don't develop. Having said that, there's certainly things we want to see. The rail yard, there's development we want to see in town, but it's not a dire, urgent need. I just want to stress that, if, in case somebody got the impression of what. And so, thank you, Councilman Hushner.
And, and in closing, when Dick's not spending endless hours on the ethics issues, Dick is spending endless.
He's on the water.
Dick is spending endless hours crunching the water as well. So, again.
Yeah. Thank God we have Dick in town. I tell you, thank you.
I just want to point out one thing very, very quickly. This is a very serious discussion that we're having. Making a decision next month is, is awfully onerous.
My, my suggestion for next month is, by consensus, so, again, my suggestion for next month is, you have two views expressed this evening. I'll purport one expert, that's Dick's, representing Water and Sewer, and then mine, which is by no means an expert view, but more couched towards being conservative with town money, town resources. What I'm suggesting next council meeting is, by consensus, we pick one of these numbers. And we take that consensus number and start to run it through the process with MDE and MML. So, we get an idea of what will come back to us from authorities like MDE, MML. In the meantime, planning is busy working on legislation to allocate whatever number we do arrive at. So, I'm not suggesting that we pick the, the council determine the number next month. I, I, I bet we don't determine that number for four months. But still, that's another four months. We have no possibility of economic development, because we've got to get more water released.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Dick. All right. We have to, next on the agenda is picking a date for the Socorro annexation, public hearing. I would suggest seven fifteen before the next council meeting. Does that, anybody have a problem with that? I don't expect it to be, you know, a largely intended one, so. Seven fifteen, next council meeting. That gives you time to do all your advertising and. Okay. Up next, it's the Verizon lease. Chris?
Yeah, I have a conflict of interest, so I'll recuse myself.
If I can just point out, Sean Sutton is here representing Verizon.
Okay.
He's in the back.
Okay, I said, okay, in the booth. Welcome. Is Pat leaving too? Okay.
Yes, on Verizon. It's its council decision.
Okay. This is the, the, the tower stuff, right?
Yeah, so, a, a lease with lease provisions have been, were initially prepared by Verizon and for the town's review. I, at the request of Barney, went through the lease provisions. We did have some recommended changes to Verizon, which hopefully Verizon has in red line form. And it's the, it's what you all have on the table before you now. There are a couple of ways to proceed. To me, I think, in speaking with Barney, what may be best, subject to y'all's determination on this, is a lot of the back and forth, as you will see, deals with a lot of the language, indemnity provisions, things of that sort, insurance, et cetera. I don't know if, if the council wanted to perhaps at least approve in principle the, the basics, which are that, you know, for X amount of rent, I think it's annual twenty thousand or thereabouts, you know, that, that we would lease the space on the tower for the, for the Verizon equipment, basically. Subject to, you know, future negotiation with Verizon and me, in consultation with Barney, on the language and some of the provisions that are not yet completely agreed to.
All right. I, I mean, I read through these red lines earlier today. We were emailed this. I mean, it looks to me like this is a standard water tower lease agreement that Verizon probably uses everywhere. You can pick that up from little.
Yeah.
Sentences in the agreement, that this is just their standard form, and Tom's just kind of doctoring it up a little to fit us.
Be acting as our agent?
He'll, he'll work it out.
Certainly, yes.
I, I, I would move that we, in, in principle, approve this lease and let, I guess I'm trying to think of the way to sum this up and let Tom make whatever.
Subject to negotiate, future negotiations on the exact language by town council.
That sounds good. Got a second? Any discussion?
I have no doubt.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's four. All four. All right. Next, Chris, you can come back.
He doesn't want to.
All right, we've got an emergency purchase update on the relocation of the ten inch sanitary force main. Barney?
Yes.
That's you.
I think this was in December. December seventeenth, I had sent something to Mayor Pat about the Storm Sewer Project in Prospect Park. It comes up Prospect Road and eventually to Main Street. That project ran into a, a point where we had to make a decision, hence the reason for an emergency purchase. The project would have come to a halt. Otherwise, we would have been paying mobilization and demobilization costs. But the contractor moved beyond the point where this problem occurred. And what it was, it was a ten inch force main that comes out of the pump station number five, which is down in the back of Prospect Park. That it was directly in line with where the concrete forty-two inch pipe was going. And so, that, that was the first, first one. And then there was a second area in the park, as you're coming up through the parking lot, where the force main would have ended up underneath the, the concrete pipe. When, if something were to ever happen to that pipe, and Brian had to go dig it up, he's going to be dealing with this concrete pipe that's right above his head trying to fix this, this other force main. So, the idea was to reroute that pipe in the parking lot area, and then closer, further down at the back of the pond, in that area, we had to lower the pipe, the, the force main underneath the concrete pipe. So, there was two areas required action right away. We considered it to be an emergency purchase and got the approval. And now we're letting you know what, what that was. So, the, we did seek two bids. We, we, actually, we were asking for three bids, ended up with two bids. The, the smaller amount was thirty-nine thousand, two hundred eighty-five dollars, and we moved forward with that. So, this is part of twenty-six dash two emergency purchase. This is our time to let you know that, that that occurred.
So, we're, it's already happened. We're just stating this publicly so the public knows what, what has occurred.
So, there's no real action needed by us at this point?
There was an urgency action. We had to move forward. It's to. In the spirit of being transparent.
Thanks, Barney. Up next, we've got the Two Park Avenue, the Flatiron Building, discussion and recommendation. Barney, you saw some stuff on this as well.
Yes.
Barney, I had a few more questions.
By all means, please. Do I have slides? No. I'm sorry. If you liked slides, I would prepare some for you.
I jest, because Barney and I spent about the entire weekend discussing this.
But the slides. We did take a break for Super Bowl, though.
No, we did break. Thank you for that, by the way. But immediately after the game ended, I got an email.
Flatiron Building, I'm just going to summarize what's, what's in here. But it's coming upon the need for some major maintenance on the building due to, there's water, water penetration issues in the foundation wall. There's water penetrating into the, through the brick. There's water coming in through the, at the roof line where there's cracks and coping. Not where we're seeing water come into the space itself, but running in between the brick and the block walls. So, there's a lot of, a lot of water issues. We did a structural analysis in May of last year, which, last fiscal year. And that, it was something that not only brought out some of these issues, that, the water issues, but also looked at the structural integrity of the, of the floors, the way their size and the loading. Found that the second floor does not meet today's standard. If they wanted to build the building that way, they, they would have to beef up that floor. Not saying that you have to go back and replace it now. If we were to do a major renovation, you would have to replace it at that time. There were some other things that came out in the, in the survey, but basically, weathered mortar joints, and, and this is from that structural analysis, but also speaking with representatives of the Historical Society and other people that have been in that building, like the police. But the weathering of mortar joints, significant wall deterioration due to water damage, roof-related damage, third floor framing, as we discussed, internal stairwell. Right now, there's not a stairwell that connects all three floors. There's stairwell that goes from the second floor to the third floor. There's actually two of them. And, but they, again, don't meet today's standards. And for the museum, for storing artifacts like, that are in there, the paper itself, really should have separate temperature and humidity controls, not sharing a thermostat with the, with another floor, which it currently does. Right now, that thermostat sits in the police floor, and there is no separate controls downstairs. Handicap accessibility, essentially, it's lacking that throughout. So, code compliance, we talked about a couple of them, but there's, there's other things that could be brought up to code compliance. There are several known site issues as well. One of the things, one of the biggest things is pedestrian flow through the downtown. It'd be, you have a narrow sidewalk right alongside this building on Main Street. There's not a sidewalk on Park Avenue on that side of the street. There's not an easy way for people from the municipal lot to get down to the thrift store. Okay? And that, that's where there's probably the largest lack of parking, where there's reserved parking across the street, but none, nothing for that side of the street, except for what's on Main Street. You have a narrowed Main Street at that point, where the state looks for eleven foot wide lanes. They have eight and a half foot lanes.
That's coming up Main Street, right? Where it pinches across from Old Town Restaurant?
Exactly. Yeah. The retaining wall out front, you can see it's, it's cracking, showing some signs of failure. Stormwater flow is another issue, where that water comes down Park Avenue, doesn't really have anything collecting it until you get down, all the way down to Hood Street. So, that's another thing that can be addressed as part of the site issues. Other desires, you have a steep grade at the south end of the building. On the Concheta side of the building, there's a, there's that, that wall.
Cliff.
That cliff. Yeah, thank you.
Cliff of Mount Airy.
The south building face, you know, especially with all that growth in there and, and just the way that side of the building looks, just, it's not the most attractive thing when you're coming. coming into town, into the downtown from the south. Potential leasable area, this is just a thought that could be thrown out there, if we gain some space there, it could be used for leasable area. The other option for that space could be for community center space, potential activities there. Possible lead certification, if we want to look for energy-efficient building. So there's a lot of things for us to consider moving forward, and being that we have such a large need for maintenance right now, I'm recommending that this is the ideal time to do a feasibility study, bring a consultant on board, and provide you with several options for a conceptual design.
What's the rationale behind keeping the building?
It's historic, it shows up on just about every picture you see.
I'm not the rationale behind the town, the town keeping ownership of the building.
Oh, or selling the property, as opposed to selling it off?
Because what Barney's describing sounds to me like a couple million bucks.
And again, I think it needs, it was part of our week, weekend-long discussion, to clarify, Barney pointed out a lot of issues with the building, and he's basically right, not a hundred percent right, in my opinion, because I've inspected the property after heavy rains, there's no ceiling tiles wet, but I tell you, it probably needs a new roof. I can't say that there's water flooding in the basement, I've inspected with Pete. That's not to say we don't have to address some water concerns, because Barney says there was some hydro cement put in, and then the parging came off. You could basically go in there, put a new roof on, tuck point the building, do some waterproofing issues, and be done. However, I have to say Barney did win me over, there's a lot of things you could do with that building, it has historical significance, and we ought to look at the best use for the property, and I think this study will do that. However, we need to be clear, and this is where it took some understatement on my part, this twenty-five thousand dollars is just to study options, and I'm going to see, would this give us a plan for?
This will give you drawings, actually conceptual drawings for at least three options.
And then we can decide, hey, we want to do this, and so we can make the best use of the property. So I tell you, it took a long time to sell me.
And this is already budgeted, correct? We already have forty thousand dollars?
I mistakenly said forty thousand last time, I didn't change it, it's actually fifty thousand.
Fifty. Okay, so we have fifty thousand budgeted, and you want to spend twenty-five of it to do this, that's our decision here. Okay, just wanted to get focused on what we're actually deciding. Pete obviously has something to talk about on the building.
What was the fifty budgeted for?
Pete was around the building originally, I think.
Okay, but if I could, just pause for a minute, in addition to this study, we will have another engineering study will be needed, let's kind of give her, let's get the whole picture. So we do this conceptual, and they draw it up, they say, hey, you can do this, this, and this, you can possibly gain this space, you can have people, more accessibility, we take care of your rainwater problems, but then we'll have to do one more study?
Well.
Or we just put out the bid at that point, once we decide?
Well, two things that we'll consider doing, and one especially we should do right away is a boundary study, we need to know exactly where those property lines are.
Okay, that's.
Rumor is it's halfway up the cliff.
Well, that's.
That's, I just want to look at the big picture. So we do this, we do this study, and then what's next?
You're on the top, they're on the bottom.
What's next after we see our conceptual options? What's next?
Then it's going to detail design.
And then we have to go out and do another study?
Well, you're actually going to take the option that you want.
Yes, sir.
You have the concept that you want.
Yes.
And move forward with doing a final design.
So I'm just saying, that other twenty-five thousand is going to be the major use.
How long is it going to take to do the twenty-five K that you want to do?
The twenty-five K is going to take about ninety to one hundred and twenty days.
Okay, which puts us, April, it's pushing April, May timeframe.
Yes.
And then we're going to have twenty-five K left on the table, because everything resets the end of June.
Right.
Except for a boundary study, and if we wanted to do any testing on the foundation wall, those were the other two things that we might want to spend this year, but you're right, there would be access.
Would that basically get you what you need to move forward? Or are we going to need to budget more? I mean, I know, sort of jumping off topic.
I think that's what we'll need for you all to make a decision, what you want to, you might decide that you want to do the very minimal, not really do anything, you might want to do it in addition, you might want to just bring it up to code, there's going to be a lot of options.
All right, I want to hear what Pete has to say, because he spends more time on that building than any of us.
Thanks, sir. First of all, let me say, I appreciate you all looking at this, been working toward this since January of last year. In answer to your question about the building itself, the building is celebrating its hundred and tenth anniversary. Perhaps in nineteen and fifty-one, when Walter Spurrier was the mayor, this building was not a historical building at that time, but over the years since nineteen fifty-one, this building has become a historical building. We say, we as a town say, visit historical downtown Mount Airy. After the fire of nineteen oh-three, this building was rebuilt, and it has significant changes to it since then, as you have pointed out to me, Councilman. But taking in our town in the context of our town, historical downtown Mount Airy, this building is historical downtown Mount Airy. So we, as the citizens, not only of our town, we live in the town, but the people outside of the town, our citizens, we need this building. And I've been here since about six-thirty today, had the opportunity to look at this picture over top of your head, sir, and I asked everybody sitting at this table to envision this picture without this building. So I asked that the money be appropriated, the first twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars, let's move forward on this, we footdrub way, way too long, and it's caused a major problem here with our building. And it may not be able to be used for a commercial site, it may not even be able to be used for the police, may not even be the home of the historical society, which we are appreciative of, but this building needs to be renovated and saved, it just does for our town, your town, Mount Airy, Maryland, and we need to do that. So I ask you all, approve this, this first twenty-five point five thousand dollars, let's get this study started and move on. So at the end of April, we can say, we've got this, and this is kind of what we need to do.
Question for you, Barney, what were the three surveys you were looking for? Or what were the three, you were looking for, you named off three things that you were looking at doing?
Well, we want to do this.
Boundary, you're talking about the boundary?
The boundary survey.
Okay, boundary survey.
So we know exactly what the points of the property, what we own.
Foundation check or something?
The water foundation walls.
Okay, water foundation.
We want to do some testing on that, possibly.
Okay, and then what was the?
And the other is do this twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollar concept and feasibility study.
Okay, concept, I'd like to make a motion that we release the funds necessary to take care of the concept, feasibility study, the water foundation study, and the boundary. God, I can't read my own writing.
Survey.
Survey.
I'll second that.
What's the total cost?
Well, he's, release the money, so he's got the.
He's got the fifty K.
It's only what we've already budgeted.
The fifty K is already budgeted, so what I'm saying is, he's saying that we need these three pieces to sort of get everything rolling, so I'm, what I'm saying is, let's authorize him up to fifty thousand dollars to take care of these three surveys.
Really, this is something that we already put a line on, and we already have a budget item for, we're just saying, go ahead and spend it, go ahead and do what we said we wanted to do with it. I'm not even sure why we did a vote on it.
You've already budgeted.
It is a budget item, is there some reason?
You just do it, thank you for informing us.
Yeah.
Procurement procedures.
Well, you're going to have to go out and get your bids and stuff.
And you guys have to.
But you don't have a bid to show us right now, so.
Do we need to take a motion?
Unless it's over thirty thousand, we do not have to bring it to the council, you're correct, but being, you know, this is an important thing about the, again, the history of the town and what you want to do with this building, we just want to make sure that this is really what you want to do, I mean, that's why we're bringing it to you.
Well, I guess we'll find out after we get the study back. So we got a motion in a second, unless there's any more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Thanks, Pete. Okay, next up, we've got this approval to hire a junior engineer and town inspector. This is something, we actually just got the data on all these guys, I guess it was, was it today?
Today.
Because I saw it this morning. And the proposal is that we leave three, you know, that we kind of let them choose among five. I know, I've spoken to some of the council who didn't particularly feel comfortable at this point doing that, and I don't, and I can see that, so I would tend to say, you know, why don't you guys get your one and bring it back to us unless.
And just so the public knows, it's a little bit out of the ordinary, normally we would bring a candidate to the council, and they would vote yes or no on that candidate suitability. What Barney has asked, in the interest of saving some time, and he laid out rationale for it, is that we have four candidates, and he's asking council to pre-approve all four, so that if there's selection made, just let us know if any one of them's inappropriate. So it's a little out of the ordinary, definitely last minute.
Same type situation, though this is a budgeted position.
Yeah.
This employee that passed away, I would think that if we were emailed with a candidate that we, that.
I'd like that, but that was discussed with Tom earlier as not.
Yeah, that's a, that's a, that's a no-go.
Unless the town council decides to change that, and I think that there was compelling.
This is just, we're pretty much in an emergency situation here.
Well, we've been, we've been absorbing these duties for months now, and it's.
Oh, I agree, I want to get them off you guys.
Is there any accommodation we can make?
Yeah, and again, just to point out, in addition to sometimes waiting, going through it, they already have a very long interview process, in addition to going through that long interview process, then they have to wait to hit a council meeting, then, once they get a candidate selected, and remember, the candidate, if he's professional, and I think the ones we're hiring are, they usually give two or three weeks' notice at their current employer, so this can really stretch out for months and months, and that's why I think councilman average and other councilmen have expressed concerns, kind of changed the process.
And the other thing is, what if that candidate doesn't accept?
Yeah, because he's actually looking for a job when it came to you, so he may have taken it all.
We also should have had these, you know.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know.
We're supposed to have it a week ago.
Exactly.
Totally agree, there is no doubt about that, you should have had it earlier, didn't work out that way.
Can I ask, I mean, can we still do a similar process, even though we come up with a first selection, can we have a second selection and just get a pre-approval in case the first one does not accept? Just asking that for the next week.
Now, what are you asking now, sir?
For next time, oh, yeah, I would say sure. He's saying when he comes, he's going to come back to us with a number one and a number two, can we, when he comes back to us with those, can we approve both of them and say, yeah, take number one?
Actually, that's, well, you may be able to, it's kind of a little out of process, we'll put forth a candidate, it's not in the way we do our structure for council to decide who they're going to hire, that's an executive function, we'll put forward a candidate, and they can decide up or down.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
No, I thought it was, we put forward several suitable candidates, and you'd select.
You're going to put forward a first option and a second option, should number one decline?
For your own benefit, if number one declines, you don't have to come back to us a month later.
Yeah, then it doesn't go on for three months.
If you don't want to do it, you don't have to, but all you're saying.
Let's see, it's gotten on a slippery slope to where now we're going through a selection process, but we'll see, we'll consider it.
All right.
We're trying to streamline.
This will be on the next agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, Barney, keep working hard.
All right.
Are you jumping into the town test and doing new business in the town, test is a fun.
Yeah, Peter, I just have one, one add to new business.
Oh, okay.
I'm just looking for consensus from the council. We've just hit this problem yet again, the council weighing in on hiring non-management employees, and now, again, how many months is it going to take? So I've asked staff to take a look at some guidelines, some language, they came back with sort of the following information, right now, we have two exempt employees, the town manager, the town engineer. I would think, from a council perspective, that it would want to retain approval over the town manager, the town engineer, perhaps HR and financial, nothing else. So what I'm looking.
And the council chooses the town clerk already.
Yeah, that's already in the code, so what I'm looking for consensus from the council is to have staff get together with Tom, define language that distinguishes between those types of job categories, the manager, the engineer, HR.
Management, non-management.
Correct.
Well, you just want to come up with a definition, come back to us with it, and say, hey, here's the line, I think we can draw, can we vote on this?
Right.
I'm willing to look at whatever you come up with.
Right, so we can get out of this, it takes months to hire someone. Any dissent on that idea?
No, not at all.
We'll wait and see what you come back with.
Dave?
I'll wait to see what you come back with.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
All right, let's, if we can, fly through the reports as best and quickly.
Oh, goodness.
Uh-oh, Heather, she's always a problem.
I know, that Heather lady.
I just want you to prove something.
Okay.
That Barney slipped in front of you.
That's the bond?
Uh-huh.
That's down here highlighted, and y'all, I'm not there yet.
I'm sorry, my copy didn't have that.
That's okay, I have the special copy with Debbie's handwritten notes and the highlighting, that's why sometimes I get off, off the list.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor and Council reports, Mayor.
Skip me.
Okay, great, I'll be glad to do that.
No, I'll come back, I'll come back.
Sanitation and recycling.
Sanitation and recycling, our bid packages for the trash and recycling services have been advertised, current contract is up this June the thirtieth, we're having a special meeting here February fifteenth at ten a.m. to open the bids received, we'll be discussing them at our February the twentieth meeting, I think it is, yeah, February the twentieth meeting, and be coming back in March with a recommendation to the council on our.
On our website, the bid package.
I don't know.
Tell Monica what they're.
Mary's been taking care of most of it, getting all the information out. Our preliminary budget numbers for two thousand fourteen have gone in, new recycling brochure is printed and ready for delivery, we're looking for an avenue to get it out to the citizens, maybe something like the chili cook-off, and, you know, as many avenues as we can to get that in people's hands. Lowering the maximum weekly pickup of trash allowed is being investigated, our recycling tonnage has increased, trash has decreased proportionally, so we're looking at, right now, I think we allow a hundred and twenty gallons trash per week, and we're looking at reducing that to ninety gallons, which is three trash cans.
Four trash.
About a trash can. Next meeting's on Wednesday the twentieth, seven p.m. at Town Hall.
All right, is the mayor going to take a shot?
Now, we didn't have our meeting in January, and I tell you what, I recapped two thousand twelve, I'm just going to hit it real quickly, financially, we did fantastic last year, our reserves increased, we maintained our home state tax credit, we didn't increase taxes, and we didn't cut services, it's commendable performance, it's down economy, we're continuing with the water infrastructure replacement, Barney actually has an email list to anybody that wants to stay up to date on what's happening, you can get on that list, we're continuing to make improvements to Main Street, rails to trails projects going forward, the council helped move that forward today, moving on, again, everyone knows we're going to start our sidewalk improvement projects in April, they're actually holding, Barney and staff are holding meetings with downtown merchants to address any concerns they had, similar to when we did the water main projects, Claude Stafford doing that, I'm getting a lot of calls from citizens about these crosswalks, they will be somewhat improved as a result of this sidewalk improvement, just want everybody in the community to know that, I keep working with the State Highway Administration to get some kind of flashers or something out there. Moving forward, this whole report is on the town website, the town is continuing talks with Leesha Harrison, we're trying to see if there's enough interest to move this forward, and once we decide that there is enough interest, it'll come forward for public hearings, blah, blah, blah.
And by the way, the council has not been meeting with.
In secret.
Carroll County, in secret, and the council hasn't met with, really hadn't been meeting with them, period. Councilman Blais and I have been meeting with them, the two of us, since it's not a quorum, and the rest of the council's not there, we're just trying to sort things out.
And the meetings were actually open.
Yeah, people have come in and sat down, Adam, if they wanted.
I mean, so there was no such thing as a secret meeting.
Okay, I did a special thanks to Catonsville Homes, Rob Scranton. Okay, I did a special thanks to Catonsville Homes, Rob Scranton, for letting us use his property down there all this year. It's very nice of him to do so. The resident triborist here this evening, in the wake of the Connecticut tragedy. He's been around to the schools. Again, details are available online, but he's been around to the schools. Councilman Everidge has actually assisted in that endeavor. Tell everybody to know that for this, for the first time, we've actually put a marker on all the school bus stops. We had a volunteer, Chris Newman, come forward, and he's marked all the bus stops in town that can be potentially plowed in. The plow truck drivers know this, and they'll try to divert snow away from that, so parents don't have to dig out for days after a huge snowstorm. Moving into February, we have really good news coming from the state. The governor's proposed budget would restore 50% of the highway user revenues. For years, this has been diverted from the state's general fund. The, the good thing about this year is, it's actually in the budget. Years past, we couldn't even get it in the proposed budget. They'll vote in April. If that money comes back, it could mean $277,000. I've always been optimistic that these funds would return, and therefore, I've always been hesitant to promote changes such as removal of the home state tax credit or tax increases for what could have been a temporary decrease. And if this gets passed in April, it'll be huge for us. It'll be a huge bonanza for the town. Use of Internet notices, Maryland Municipal League. Bob and I attended dinner the other night, and again, it's, I call it a meeting with a dinner. And what we learned that evening was about highway user revenue funds. And additionally, we learned about cost-saving measures for towns that MML is proposing. And that's so, when we do all this advertising, it costs us thousands of dollars. MML is trying to submit proposals that we could put this, a little blurb in the paper, and then advertise on the Internet to save us a considerable amount of money. I'd like to remind everybody that we do have an emergency notification system in town. So far, 147 people have signed up for the Mount Airy portion of it. 101 of those are in our municipal boarders. Again, go to the town website, click the links, it's easy, and you can get all the emergency notifications from the town. We're getting ready to start the If I Were Mayor contest again this year, and the theme of this year's contest is vision for the future. Bob King will be joining me, Councilman Bob King will be joining me this year as we visit Twin Ridge Elementary, and will also be visiting Mount Airy Elementary School. And we want to make sure to let private and homeschoolers know that they can also be involved in this project. I believe I gave you a flyer, and I'm also going to reach out to homeschoolers and private schools. Please contact Heather Smith here at Town Hall to arrange to take part in this project.
We've had homeschoolers win that.
Fantastic, fantastic.
Here in town.
Well, good.
When Jim Holt was mayor, it was a homeschool friend of my son's that.
You know, that's right. I remember you telling me about. It's fantastic, but I didn't know that they were included. I want to make sure that they get included. I just put a note in here about working together. I thanked Mr. Tom Pank. For years, we had issues down at the Pank industrial property, and pretty contentious issues. But, working together with Mr. Pank and the citizens down there, we were able to, to solve many of the incompatibility issues. There are certainly incompatibility issues with different zonings, and that's one of the reasons we have traditional zones. However, this is a case where it actually worked. Mr. Pank, at his own expense, has planted trees and rearranged some of his C containers to shield some of the negative impacts, or what the negatives, the neighbors felt were negative impacts, from his industrial site. And it actually worked out good, so I'd like to thank the neighbors for their willingness to work, and Mr. Pank for his willingness to work. Moving forward, attention all art enthusiasts. Take my time in this because it involves Councilman King's wife here. If you're looking for a way to showcase your art, do you want to bring more arts to Mount, Mount Airy? Are you looking for an outlet to promote your talent? To address these needs, we are exploring establishing an arts council here in Mount Airy. The goal will be to promote the arts by finding venues and artists and their talents, to bring the arts to Mount Airy, to attract more people, and to enhance Mount Airy's viability to all walks of life. Please contact program coordinator, Tara King. Her email address is T E A N O.
902.
902@AOL.com. Please put Art Council on the subject line, or you can contact me here at Town Hall, or on my cellphone. My number's, my number's wrong.
1-800-CALL-PAT.
My, my number's wrong here. Gems of Mount Airy. As everyone knows, the employees of this town come first to me, and they come first to the town citizens. You do a great job, so I did highlight each employee first. I'd also like to highlight some gems in Mount Airy. Mount Airy's gem for many reasons. We're one of the few municipalities on a superior groundwater system, to answer a question that was asked earlier. We are close to several larger municipal hubs, but we've retained our small-town charm. Through careful planning and limits, we will be able to maintain this wonderful community we call home. We are also home to some very unique businesses. To get the word out and support these businesses, I plan to feature them in this article. The first featured business is the Mount Airy Locker Company, home of Wagner Meats, who has been a Mount Airy staple for over 50 years. Such local, individualized butchering services can be hard to find, especially given the large grocery industry and larger facilities. We are very fortunate to retain these unique services right here in Mount Airy. Plenty of people can give you stories how they get custom cuts of meat, pork belly that's not even available in the retail chains. They, they do it all. Wagner Meats is a place where you can still talk directly to a knowledgeable local butcher who produces the product from farm directly to you. They offer beef, pork, and lamb products. They sell beef and pork for the freezer. Barbecue pigs are also available, things that you can't get anywhere else. Of course, they offer a variety of bread, milk, and cheeses. They're very proud of their beef patties, their jerky, and their beef sticks. Tom, owner Tom Wagner encourages everyone to try us, you'll like us. Their information's available. They are conveniently located on North Main Street. The mayor's forum will hold one forum this month. It'll be February 23rd, from 10:30 to noon. As I've been handing out welcome packages, I usually just invite the citizens to come in and talk to me, but I noticed we have a lot of new citizens. I have actually 100 welcome packages to hand out. I think we got a bit backlog, but it might be good for the newer citizens in the community over in Sterling Glen and the newer section of Nottingham. They just may want to come in, see what, see their Town Hall, learn more about their town government. So, please do that on Saturday forum. It concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Parks and Rec, beautification.
Okay, for Parks and Rec, we discussed the budget at our last meeting, and we have attended a budget that we've pushed up. We have a run that is going to be supporting a young lady in our community who has lymphoma. It's a Megan's Run, which is on March 23rd, 2013. We have started to talk about a vision for the skate park. We actually had to table that because we didn't have enough members to really have a very quantifiable talk. And then, we also were approached by a parents group within the Twin Ridge community that are looking at trying to build a track, an actual 400-meter track. So, it would actually benefit the community and also benefit the, the children of Twin Ridge. I was unable to go to the beautification meeting, do a family thing, so that is my report.
Thanks, David. Planning, EDC.
So, to streamline planning in EDC, and because we've been here very long, the minutes are distributed. If there's any questions, please ask. They're available to the public as well. Two points to note is that the Planning Commission's next meeting will be on the 25th at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall, and EDC will have its next meeting on the 27th at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall.
All right. Next up is Streets and Roads. The mayor has a recommendation for appointment to Streets and Roads, which he forgot in his report.
Well, I had to dump two months of reports on you guys, and I just overlooked that one. I'd like to recommend, everybody's received this gentleman's application, they had an opportunity to look at his credentials. I'd like to recommend Mr. Wayne Creek to serve on our.
Streets and Roads.
Streets and Roads Commission.
Still moved? Have a second?
Second.
Got a couple seconds over there. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Streets and Roads has actually, due to, due to vacations, storms, holidays, and everything else, Streets and Roads hasn't met in a while, we're having a meeting out of our normal rotation, which is going to be this Thursday. So, we'll be meeting here this Thursday. We'll be discussing mostly speed issues. We'll be looking at the master plan. And we have a new speed machine that allows us to monitor speed without the little strips in the street. So, we'll have some new data from that. So, that's Streets and Roads, water and sewer.
So, I have a rather lengthy. Oh, never mind.
Way to make friends.
Your, your time's up, Chris.
I think I've out, I think I've outstayed my welcome on that one. I've reported.
You're done, you've reported. Town Administrator.
She's administrator.
All right, we will jump onto Town Attorney.
Over the last month, I've worked on the water allocation opinion that hopefully each of you now have. The bid on the bond issuance and the post-issuance policy that you all adopted tonight, as well as the Verizon lease. In the next month, a couple of things. First of all, the Watkins Building matter goes back to trial on February 22nd, we hope. Second, as they laugh. Second, I do hope to get back into the Harrison LaShire documents and get some revamped documents based on latest discussion. To you all first, and then upon a global review to, to IDA's counsel. I'll also be working on finishing the ethics ordinance very, very soon to get to, to Dick to send to state. And I think that's it.
All right. Town Administrator, Monica.
Just real quickly, Pat and I have finished evaluations, and we're going to be meeting with staff in the next couple of weeks.
We had a meeting two weeks ago, but due to the flu.
We had a meeting two weeks ago, then you got the flu.
Due to the flu.
Bob wants to know about his race.
Charlene has pretty solid numbers.
The flu, how, when did you get the flu?
Preliminary budget. And the other thing I wanted to tell you is, we put out a little policy letter on this, sticking the ground bandit signs with Tom's help and Pat's help.
What's that?
The bandit signs, the letter, policy letter that we sent out to all the businesses to make sure that they knew that they're, they're not allowed.
You can't stick signs all over the town anymore. All right. Okay, we have one emergency add-on.
Don't use the word "money."
Okay, we had one, one pressing need that came in from Heather.
Doesn't look like an emergency to me.
This is just, you know, normally I would have said, no, forget it, but it does help out one of the town businesses, and these are typically just rubber stamping. This is a reduction in bonding for lot 34. Apparently, the delay on getting this was more at the town's end in getting this paperwork processed into us.